Hello, and welcome to the October 2nd Council Workshop for the City of Glendale, 2012. Interim City Manager Skeet, would you please introduce the first item?
Vice Mayor members of the council, the first item this afternoon for discussion and presentation is a Vieste Energy project that was introduced to you some time ago, probably in the last three months or so, and a project that we have been working on as staff for probably over two years. The project initially started out as a waste energy conversion project. Over time, it has evolved. We are now presenting to you this afternoon a two-phase process that will get us ultimately to a waste energy project. But the first phase, that I'm going to turn over to Mr. Kent to introduce and walk you through the slides on, is really a recycling project that we were going to go ahead with in an attempt to get the project started as we wait to develop the other nuances of the energy conversion component of this. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Kent for him to introduce the item and walk you through the agreement.
Thank you.
Mr. Skeet, thank you. Vice Mayor members of the council, it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. To my right is Mike Camparotto, who is the CEO of Vieste Energy. As Mr. Skeet alluded to, last May, Mr. Camparotto and I and one of his other associates presented a concept of building and constructing a waste energy facility at the City of Glendale landfill. As Mr. Skeet sort of alluded to, the project is now going to be a two-phase project. The waste energy project is still a component of this project. And Mr. Camparotto is going to talk through the first slide about where the project's at and sort of where we're at today. And then I'll walk the council through the rest of the presentation in terms of the financial benefits to the city. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Okay. Hold on a minute. Waiting for the slides to change over. Wait, let me try that. While we work through this momentary slight difficulty, I'll ask Mr. Camparotto to start talking through the slide that will appear momentarily on your screen.
Envisioned, first of all, Vice Mayor, council, thank you for receiving us again today, and I'll apologize in advance for my voice. I'm struggling through recovering from some laryngitis and a little under the weather, but hopefully you can hear me okay. As Mr. Kent and Mr. Skeet indicated, we're working feverishly with staff to fir-- there we go. I'm going to for a second. To advance our waste energy project, we've made very, very good progress in developing plans for the entire project in total. But as alluded to, what we've elected to do, and we'll talk about, I'd like to address four major components here. What we've elected to do with support of staff and participation of staff is accelerate the front-end waste management recycling portion of the project in advance. One of the things that we've noticed over the past several months since we met in May is to get the highest value power purchase agreement and disposition of the energy, how the renewable energy portion of the project will take some time, probably more time than we'd like in terms of patience, et cetera. So rather than waiting that extended period of time, we found it advantageous instead to accelerate into a phased approach and do the front end of the project actually generating revenue quicker than we would have otherwise, so that the City of Glendale is actually experiencing its revenue stream, as are we earlier than had originally anticipated, and buying us the time to really and correctly find the right disposition of the power over time to complete the balance of the project. And please be assured that we all have every intention of doing the entire project as quickly as possible. So by phasing, this is in no way, or shape, or form bifurcating the project in half. Secondly, the other point I'd like to make is that as the project has developed, we have reinforced the structure of the project such that the City of Glendale has no risk, all of the risk and all of the debt and all of the performance requirements are on Vieste as the private sector partner in this relationship. And that has maintained throughout, in both phases of the project and in the project completely. Third, the net revenue to the City of Glendale remains the same, as Mr. Kent will go through with you here in a minute, as it was proposed when we met back in May. And as I mentioned earlier, by phasing the project, we now can accelerate that revenue to the city, possibly even into 2013, whereas if you may remember in our earlier conversation, we were looking at opening the entire plant in 2014. We believe by doing this, we actually have the ability to get the initial phase of the project up and operating, hopefully even in 2013.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Camparotto alluded to, there are a number of essentially revenue streams that the city takes advantage of in this proposed arrangement. I'll touch on a few of them. First of all, the city, Vieste Energy will be leasing land at the City Glendale landfill. This is land that is currently sitting in about a 40-foot hole next to our existing recycling facility, so this is not a facility that in this first phase will even be able to be seen from the public unless you're looking down from it along Northern Avenue, right near the edge of our landfill. They will be leasing the land for $100,000 a year over the 30 years, and there is a fixed amount of 2% a year increase. So over that 30 years, we'll generate almost $3.3 million in revenue on the lease of the land alone. Secondly, the Vieste is going to rely on the city to essentially help manage and market the recyclable materials that they're going to be generating. To give you all some context, we currently sell and manage about 10,000 tons a year of recyclables from the City of Glendale curbside recycling program. Vieste anticipates probably a minimum number of 26,000 tons and potentially much more than that of recyclables, effectively increasing our amount of recycling done by almost 300% as a result of this. That 26,000 tons will all be baled and processed at their facility. We will simply be responsible for marketing it as we market our own materials. So as we're selling our loads of newspaper, we'll be selling their loads of newspaper and the other commodities at the same time. And they will pay us a fee of $476,000 a year, each year, with that fee increasing at a half percent a year over the entire 30-year term. The city guarantees to Vieste a base rate for the recyclables. And as is indicated in the third bullet, that base rate starts at just over 6.5 cents a pound and escalates to a total of about just a little over 7.5 cents a pound over a 30-year period. So over a 30-year period, we're guaranteeing a value of one penny a pound. It's a relatively small amount. Our 10-year analysis confirms the base rate since we've been marketing materials and marketing the same materials that Vieste would be delivering to us, that the base rate is appropriate based on the average commodity pricing per pound. Commodities are like anything. They go up and down in value, but we've looked over a 10-year number to make a fair evaluation to say, we believe this number is, and the .066 cents per pound is a reasonable value to set for the value. To give you all some context, current value right now is almost 11 cents per pound. So currently, we're selling almost double what the guaranteed floor rate is.
I look at the pages on, oh, the figures on page two. I'm not sure where I'm at. If I add all the figures up, 100K, 476, 1,707, 446, and 115, I get 2237 less 1.2M landfill expense. That leaves a profit of 1,037, not 561K. Where am I goofing? What is missing? What am I adding that you didn't?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, let me, I'll walk you all through the chart, which is up on the screen as well. The lease revenue, as you correctly identified, is $100,000 a year. And I've just taken the first-year numbers. I've explained that the numbers go up, but I've just looked at the first-year number as a baseline. The recycling management fee is $476,000.
That's 576.
Right. The next two line items reflect, part of the agreement also allows that the city pays Vieste $7.50 a ton for every ton delivered. So in this scenario, we're assuming that we're going to be delivering 180,000 tons, the maximum amount that they could be handling, and what we would be spending is 1.2 million. What Vieste has to return back to us is all the residuals and pay us the same amount as we paid them. So essentially, the 26,000 tons is the leftover remaining material. So that's why the expense is in red of 1.2 million, and the 1.07 million is what Vieste returns us. So that nets approximately $130,000 of additional expense.
Wait, wait, stop. Give me that again.
Certainly.
1.2 million is what we, our expenses are.
Exactly.
But we get 1.07 million back.
Yes. So the net number would be $130,000. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman.
What do you mean, 130,000 difference in between?
I'm sorry, a minus 130,000, excuse me.
Yes. Okay.
Minus, right. So then adding the 476 and the 176 was 576, minus the $130,000, we'll then come up with the $446,000 of net revenue to the city.
Oh, that's a net figure.
Yes.
Okay. Plus 115.
Right.
So we cure for our pocket 561K. I didn't realize that landfill net was a repeat.
Right.
Okay, I see it now.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, you're correct. And as you just said, the general fund, because there's property tax money as a part of the improvements that Vieste is responsible to pay, in addition to some sales tax related, obviously, the construction and the ongoing operations, they'll have 20 to 25 employees there on the site. And so we're estimating the net positive impact to the city of $561,000. And for the purpose of the presentation, I laid out the money that goes towards the landfill fund and the money that goes back to the general fund. With that, Vice Mayor and councilmembers, that really concludes our presentation. We wanted to lay everything out, and this is really an update to the presentation on the first. We'd be, Mr. Camparotto and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, are there any questions? Councilmember Clark.
Not a question so much as comment. We've been over this project and thoroughly vetted it. I'm glad it's coming forward. I believe it's a win-win for the city. And I'm glad that whomever designed the two-phase approach allowed this project to move forward instead of waiting until you had the power purchase agreement settled, because this is a good project for our landfill. It saves space in the landfill. Right now, Mr. Kent, what is the useful life of our landfill before we have to open, I believe, the south side or the north?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, the landfill currently has a site life of in excess of 40 years. We'll be moving to the north half of the landfill probably in about two years in that neighborhood. It depends on how much tonnage. With the downturn in the economy, we've seen a fairly significant drop in the amount of overall tonnage we get coming to the landfill compared to, say, four or five years ago. But we expect in about next 18 months to two years, we'll be making the transition to the north area of the landfill.
Now, does this project assist us in extending out that period at all?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it will. We currently are taking in about 240,000, 250,000 tons a year. So if we're deferring 26,000 tons, that's roughly 10% of that landfill life over time. So it provides, as you've correctly pointed out, not only potential landfill life of the landfill extending, but also the direct revenue on the front end and as an ongoing resource.
This is a good project for the city. It enhances the revenue collection for the city with the inception of Phase One of this project. And it's a project who's, that needs to move forward and move forward rapidly. I'm glad to see it finally coming forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. For those of us who care about sustainability, I think one thing, too, it increases our recycling efforts by over 300%, and that's wonderful. I'm thrilled to hear that, plus the extension on the landfill, the further years. So for those, like I say, who care about recycling and sustainability, this is a great project. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, Mr. Skeet, then the consensus is to move forward. And you'll take it from there, right?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, council.
Mr. Skeet, would you please introduce item number two?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, item number two is a discussion, a discussion on the annexation and pre-annexation agreement for the Loop 303 corridor. If you would recall, we, again, we brought this item to you for an update a couple months ago, and we have gone through an extensive study period and review of all of the implications of a potential annexation for the 303 area, which is the area west of Luke Air Force Base for purposes of, you know, description and identification. The staff would be presenting to you a summary of the study and a recommendation to move forward with this. It's important that this is not, that you recognize, and I mentioned to you that this is not a recommendation to move forward with annexation of this property. We have a pre-development agreement with the landowners and the developers in this area. One of the conditions that you've laid out for us to consider annexation in this area is that this area must not provide any additional burden on the existing geographic area within the city limits. In order to do that, we had to come up with and solve a number of issues. And the major one, and the one that is confronting us for our next step, is the SOAR. The City of Glendale currently has the certificate to SOAR that this area for SOAR. We have acted in your direction, informed the developers and the landowner in this area that they have to provide an alternative to that. What we're talking about today is moving forward with an agreement to allow them to be able to provide that alternative so that they can move forward to do the economic analysis and for us to complete the other financial analysis that can determine whether or not we can make a successful recommendation to you for annexation. This step must be done in order for us to be able to do that analysis. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Johnson for planning director now to make the presentation.
Before we turn it over, Mr. Froh, councilmember Clark, do you have a question?
Yes, I do, because I'm a little confused. In the council report, you state quite clearly that staff is seeking guidance from council on two issues: a proposed pre-annexation development agreement and the agreement for future wastewater and recycled water services to allow Global Water to provide sewer and reclaimed water on behalf of the city in the Loop 303. So I assume those are the two areas of direction, yet I'm hearing that SOAR is still an issue?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, no, I'm sorry. I did not mean to suggest that SOAR is an issue. The pre-annexation agreement that we would bring forward to you would address this. This is the next step that we have to do in order to, we've come up with a solution. We are going to present that solution to you today so that we can move forward with the pre-annexation agreement. Not that we still have a problem. We have a solution to the identified restrictions that you've placed on us, and we are here to present that solution to you so that we can move it forward to the next step.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Froh, go now.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Vice Mayor and council, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be back talking to you about the Loop 303, but working on this as Mr. Skeet said for many, many months and many, many years, actually. I'm here this afternoon with Craig Johnson, who will be presenting as part of our presentation to council this afternoon, along with Dave McElinden from our Community and Economic Development Department. He'll be coming up to the podium in just a few moments. Again, we're pleased to be here. We do have solutions, as Mr. Skeet indicated. We are seeking council direction to continue to proceed with the pre-annexation development agreement, or PADAs, we'll be referring to it this afternoon, along with the wastewater and recycled water services agreement for what we're referring to as the Loop 303 corridor. Over the past few months, staff has been working closely with the Loop 303 corridor development group on these two items. The goal is to position this area for new development and employment opportunities that takes advantage of new transportation corridors with land uses that are sensitive to our partner Luke Air Force Base. Wanted to introduce our stakeholders, who we've been working with the last, really the last seven years, beginning with Commerce Realty Advisors. Michael Martindale has been acting as the spokesperson and quarterbacking this for the property owners on this endeavor, really for the last seven years. He's in the audience tonight, or this afternoon, will not be speaking, but just for reference purposes. Also, the other stakeholders, Global Water Resources, they would actually be the proposed sewer provider for the Loop 303. And finally, two water companies that are already serving properties in this area, two private utility companies, Epcore and Adam and Mutual Water Company. Staff has had extensive conversations and meetings with our stakeholders, and everybody's moving in the same direction to position the Loop 303 for future development. Wanted to reference a map that's up on the screen. It's somewhat of a busy map. It's got a lot of information on it. Just for some context, the Northern Parkway, which is now under construction, I can zoom in on the, with the pointer, it's actually under construction now. If you look back up on the screen behind you, the Northern Parkway is under construction, as is the Loop 303 itself. It's actually been in existence for some time and is now being fully improved by ADOT. So the area in yellow is the area that Global Water Resources would be applying for what's called a Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, or CCNN. Mr. Johnson will speak to that just momentarily. Basically, this is the area that Global would be providing wastewater services and recycled water infrastructure collectively referred to as utility services. Again, the yellow line shows the areas that we've been working on. This is Luke Air Force Base, just for some contextual proximity, if you will, for the area. The cross-hatched area in the black area, if you will, is the area within which the city would sponsor with the support of Global, an amendment to what's called a MAG 208 plan. Again, this relates to sewer provisions. Mr. Johnson will speak to that momentarily. And then finally, the highlighted properties, the different colors, blue or purple, red, et cetera, these are all property owners that we've been working with, with Mr. Martindale and his company. And this represents the landowners that have paid their assessments into a private escrow account, if you will. Basically, it's paying the bills for the utility companies that will be designing the water and sewer facilities for this particular area. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Johnson, and he will discuss some of the utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Froh. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of council. Our focus for water and sewer in this area has been centered around two areas. First was the council-adopted annexation policy back in July 2005, where you stipulated that existing viable private water providers would be providing water and sewer in the areas west of 115th Avenue, which is where our current service area ends. And secondly, the draft agreement you have in your packet is an agreement that has been developed through the guidelines that you provided in the MOU that you approved in March of 2010. Three main components of the draft global agreement were addressed in detail during our meetings. Upon execution of agreement, Global will apply for a CCN at the Arizona Corporation Commission, and they will identify the areas in their application to where they're going to be providing the sewer service for that area. Did I do that? Secondly, oh, you've got to go back. There we go. A little touchy up here. Secondly, we, upon the execution of the agreement, there will be an initial MAG 208 amendment that will be, have to be done, and the city here will support that effort with them. They will take that forward. And actually, what that MAG 208 amendment will do is transfer responsibility for providing sewer in that area from the City of Glendale to Global Water.
Okay.
And the third item in the agreement is the franchise agreement. Franchise agreements are developed to provide utilities to, the ability to work in our right-of-ways with their infrastructure, to operate it and maintain it. And that franchise agreement also comes with a fee. There will be a 3% fee associated with the franchise agreement, which covers gross revenues, which are made up of base fees, consumptive fees, wastewater, and recycled water sales. Also, as part of the global agreement, there's a temporary license agreement that will also go into effect upon execution that allows Global Water to exercise the same rights as the franchise agreement. And when the franchise agreement goes into effect, then the temporary license agreement will expire.
Are there any questions so far? Okay, thank you.
Now, talking about water, as Mr. Froh mentioned earlier, we have two water providers that are already providing service in the area out there, and they also have established, they already have established CCNNs, Epcore and Adam and Mutual Water Company. Now, Epcore is going to be working with the landowner group to expand their current service area by two and a half square miles. And once that's completed, then the complete subject area that Mr. Froh showed you in the yellow outlined area then will be covered by either Epcore or Adam and Mutual Water One of the key components that we had several meetings on and wanted to make sure that we were comfortable with was the assured water supply. The State Department of Water Resources requires that all lands that are going to be subdivided have to show and demonstrate an assured water supply. That's going to be the property owner's responsibility. They're aware of that, and that's written into the PADA.
So 100-year, 100-year supply?
Yeah, and the assured water supply is 100-year supply.
Explain how that really works, not real technically. Is it, it's agreements to get water from different places? It's not necessarily, you have to have a well that's going to assure water?
The assured water supply, that certificate, you have to get, you have to go with ADWR. You give them your water study and your plan as to all your sources of water and how you're going to be developing and how your land uses are developed. And then they will work with you, and if they agree with you, they'll issue you a certificate of assured water supply for 100 years, just like we've already done here in the City of Glendale.
Right. I was just, people at home, you know, they don't understand. You do that, you live that day in and day out, but, you know, watching television, people don't understand how that works.
The other key component to the assured water supply is that each of the landowners, before we come, when they bring their preliminary plat paperwork into the city, they will have to bring in their certificate of assured water supply from ADWR. They are aware of that, and they support that effort in as part of the agreement. Vice Mayor and council, staff and the landowner group have developed a viable plan for providing the water and sewer services necessary for the development of the Loop 303 area. And we feel that our concerns about assured water supply and the plan for providing sewer service have been adequately addressed. With respect to water and sewer, the council's approach to providing services in the area benefits the city in the ways indicated here. One is, we will not use our assured water supply to serve the area. We will not expend any. We will not expend any of our current ratepayers' money to perform any capital expenditures related to water and sewer in the area. And then we will be getting revenue from the franchise fees that will come in from the providers. There are risks associated with using private providers, but those are, have been minimized greatly in the fact that these are established firms with a long history of serving the public. In this case, the city will not only have the providers as our partners, but they'll also have, we'll also have the Arizona Corporation Commission, ADEQ, Maricopa County Department of Health Services, and a number of other agencies that help regulate this business to work with. If matters arise in the future with respect to issues between landowners and the providers, the city will have the ACC and other regulatory agencies to work out issues that are brought to the city's attention. This concludes my presentation.
Councilmember, are there any questions? Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wish you'd cover, if you would please, the portions about the police service options and the fire department, and the responsibility and how this would be covered for the benefit of the public.
Vice Mayor and council, the police and fire department were, are part of the technical review of the Loop 303, and I'll defer, we will defer the appropriate presentations to the police and fire chief as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, there were several options presented in the council report. The recommended option would be between one or two. Currently, the calls for service for that annexation area would be about 648 for 2012. That's a relatively low number of calls for that geographic area. For the Glendale Police Department to provide police service for that area in year one would be about $118,000. Without adding additional FTEs, it would be an additional burden on our police officers to provide that service. The other option would be to contract with MCSO. We haven't had any conversation or any outreach to the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, but they do offer these contract services in many other areas in the county. That would be a slightly lower rate for the, for year one cost would be about $100,000.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
I do have follow-up questions about this area exactly. Who is currently servicing that area, MCSO?
MCSO is, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it's currently under MCSO. So, if we were to go to MCSO, they would experience no diminishment or increase in service. It would be exactly as it is now.
That would be my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay. The only figure that you give in the report is a $2.8 million figure at full build-out. But we're not at full build-out. We're at about a third of full build-out. As you indicated, there are 648 calls anticipated for 2012, and at full build-out, it will be slightly over 19,000 calls. So, that's roughly a third right now. So, do you have a figure, and I think you just mentioned one, a figure for what a current MCSO contract would be?
Vice Mayor Frey, Councilmember Clark, we are basing this on contracts that we have reviewed that MCSO currently has with other jurisdictions. So, we would assume that we would be able to negotiate the same level contract at the same cost of service, but that amount would be $100,528.
Well, if I, and I think we're being asked to pick an option today with regard to both police and fire service, realizing that they're currently under MCSO, I prefer option two. I think, under the current circumstances, we're best served by letting that agency continue to provide the same level of service as it has enjoyed over the past decade or two.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor and council, could I just make a comment? The Phase One development, and we'll get to this, we're not quite done with our presentation yet with Mr. McElinden, but we don't anticipate that Phase One would be shovel-ready for 30 to 36 months. So, provided what direction we get from council this afternoon, we would continue to work with police and fire. There's a lot of details that we need to work out over the next few months, including police and fire protection, above and beyond the research that we've already done, but we do appreciate the input.
So, for clarification, you're not asking us to choose an option at this point?
Not necessarily right now. We're hoping to get direction to continue to work with the internal team that's working, been working on this endeavor since June, and then continue to work with the property owner group, provide a council direction to continue to proceed.
Oh, very good, then.
Any input you want to give us this afternoon, I think, would be appropriate. But again, there's a lot of work that we would be working to complete this fall.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Martinez.
Chief Black.
One more.
You mentioned something about that there would be a cost of 118,000. Did I understand that correctly, if you were to service that area?
If the Glendale Police Department were to provide that service, we would estimate the cost of being about 118,000 per year.
So, but right now, it's not costing us anything?
No, because we don't provide service for that area. It's Maricopa County jurisdiction.
Okay, and I thought you said in 2000, I misunderstood. I thought you said 2012, but we were...
2012, their estimated calls for service for the year is 648. So, this is just how we can do our projection.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Lieberman.
Thank you. The people that are now served by MCSO, are there any extra charges to their homeowners' property association for that service?
Vice Mayor Frey, Councilmember Lieberman, I apologize, I don't have the answer to that question.
I don't think there is any.
I don't believe there is, but I don't know.
I know the fire, rural metro, whatever, was charging extra service, and I think they still are. That's not part of yours, I understand, Chief, but I am just curious, where the funding is coming, friend, to provide the sheriff's office out there? Do they have a building, a central meeting place, a jail, any service facility out there that you were aware of?
There are service, there are stations in that area, not specifically in this geographic area that we're talking about, but in outlying areas that they use to provide the service.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Lieberman, just a clarification on the fees. There is no specific fee, per se, for MCSO, but there is for rural metro.
Yes, that's what I... I was just curious if the sheriff's office or homeowners' associations, for instance, were paying a special fee to get the police protection from the sheriff's office?
Our final phase of the presentation this afternoon will be from Mr. McElinden.
Thank you, Mr. Froeg. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, council. And Councilmember Lieberman, I live out there, so I can answer the question that you asked definitively. There is no fee for MCSO, but we do pay a quarterly fee for sewer treatment.
For?
Sewer treatment, for our sewer.
For sewer treatment?
Yes.
You also pay a fee to rural metro for fire service?
We also pay a quarterly fee to rural metro for our fire protection.
In the form of an insurance policy of some sort?
No, we just pay it through our homeowners' association. It's about $150 per quarter.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and council. I'm going to discuss a little bit with you about the fiscal impacts of what a potential annexation would do. In short, does this annexation make fiscal sense to Glendale? To help us answer that, we retained the services of applied economics to assist us in conducting a fiscal impact study. Virtually every city department that was involved in either providing input and/or data to this study. There are, of course, a number of assumptions that we used, based on general plan, expected land uses, and loop compatible land uses. This study represents an estimate of the net revenues to Glendale. The estimated time horizon is 20 years. However, quite honestly, the market will dictate the length of time, and Loop 101's a good example of that. Our focus is on revenues and expenditures, and it includes the general fund, streets, transportation sales tax, and police and fire special revenue funds. The study focuses on three areas. And if you look at the map, the tan area represents Wolf Crossing, which is the first area we had the study look at. The second area in purple is the Phase One of the project area. That's all of the landowners that are participating right in the first part of the phase. And the green area are the landowners and properties that are not included in the first phase. And as you can see, many of those are in the loop compatible land areas. The analysis concluded that at build-out, again, 20 to 30 years from now, the result at Wolf Crossing is a negative revenue impact of approximately $324,000 annually, primarily due to residential component. Wolf Crossing will include commercial, industrial, and about a 600-unit residential development. And it's the residential development that tips it over into the negative category. The Phase One of the project area build-out will result in a positive net fiscal impact of approximately $20.7 million annually, based on a significant amount of sales and property tax generated due to the non-residential development that is expected to occur. And the Phase One project area is a lot of commercial, office, retail, so that is the generator, revenue generator for us there. And the balance of the land, not included in the Phase One area, generates approximately $2 million net to the city if and when we were ever decided to annex it. Quite honestly, that area, John, if you would go back to that, as you can see, most of that area in the green is in the, inside the contour areas, little or if any develop would occur there, and it would generate very little revenue to the city. According to the study, the Loop 303 corridor annexation will generate a sizable positive net revenue impact on the city of Glendale, given that projected development includes predominantly non-residential uses, and includes a sizable amount of retail and commercial use. Should future development plans or market conditions change significantly, the projected impact results would be quite different. But based on the assumption used in this report, this overall area is fiscally sustainable and would be a positive to the city in terms of net revenue impacts. Vice Mayor, this concludes my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmembers? I just have a question. How do you, what happens if residential just takes off and we don't have...
Vice Mayor, that's an excellent question, and that's why I put the one caveat in there. This is based on a substantial amount of commercial and retail development that would generate a lot of sales tax, a lot of property tax through office development. As you were to increase the amount of residential that would incur, you would offset that with the amount of property tax and sales tax that you would collect. So, as one increased, the other would decrease. And it could, depending on the amount of residential development, could decrease substantially.
Any questions?
Mayor and councilmember, council, in conclusion, we are seeking staff direction to continue to work with the Loop 303 corridor development group, work through the details that are contained in the staff report and the backup report. The next step is that we would come back to an evening meeting and present the PADA and the utility agreements to council for consideration and vote at a future evening meeting sometime this fall.
Mr. Tyndall, I have a question. This is a pre-annexation, and what is the process? You know, it's pre-annexation, what's the next step? And there's obviously a bunch of steps to the final, so can you kind of explain legally what, how that works? Or for my clarification?
Is it on now? Vice Mayor, the process right now is that we'll enter into the pre-annexation development agreement, and then the annexation, and the contingencies for annexation will be fulfilled, and then the annexation process will kick in. The process of annexation, I'd probably defer to Mr., John would better be able to explain the process of annexation than I would.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Because of the complexities of the 303, we would anticipate, again, finishing up the agreements this fall and then working with the individual property, and some of whom are represented this afternoon, with actual annexation work. We haven't done an annexation in Glendale for about two years. Just to refresh everybody's memory at home, we would come back to an evening meeting, have a, the first step is to have a public hearing on a blank annexation petition with a map showing the area that would be under consideration for annexation. There's some state statutory work that's required by staff after the public hearing is held, and then we would come back, again, to another evening meeting, asking council to adopt an ordinance and a map. If that was adopted within 30 days, and the city limits would be expanded based on the legal description and the mapping contained in the ordinance.
Thank you. Mayor, I know you got here a little, if you have questions or...
No, I don't. Apologize for being late. It was a conflict, and it was a, an event at which I was being honored, so it seemed nice to kind of stay for the whole event. And I would just like to comment to all of those who are involved and have been involved in this project for so many years, express appreciation, admiration for your fortitude, and it seems like every time things have been going along fine, there's a new hurdle to go over. But I believe that in all the years I've been in office, you certainly rank at the top in terms of a group of landowners and others interested in coming into the city of Glendale in terms of responding to every single question, every single aspect of what needs to be done, in terms of working cooperatively with all, a myriad of staff members, and just responding positively to everything that comes along. And I just say thank you, and look forward to this becoming a reality.
I agree.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to point something out, you know, we've got a lot of good information, but for the viewing public, they don't have what we have. Just like to mention that what we're talking about here are 6,831 real property parcels. And the CSS valuation, and I'm taking this to mean at the present time, which will only grow, we're talking 60 million, 67 million, $39,835. So, this is one of the few in public to get an idea of what we've been discussing and what it means for Glendale sometime in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate the principals who have been involved in this project from the very beginning. We set out certain requirements that you diligently worked and worked a very long time to meet, and I think you have met your burden with regard to all of the things that the city has asked you to do. And I am delighted to see this come forward, and I am looking forward to approving the annexation of this property. It's long overdue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, last comment.
Vice Mayor.
Just along, you know, we've been discussing about growth, orderly growth, how it's done. But I have to say, the team, and it is the team, and you've worked together, all the landowners, but you've always kept, and your utmost mind was to protect Luke, and you've done that, and we appreciate that, because once this is done, it'll be out of the county's hands. And we can do, we can actually have orderly growth around there, and I believe it'll be, even in the, near the contours, eventually, that is going to be actually an area where I see some industrial, you know, areas that are low density, no, you know, not a lot of people, but useful land. And I look forward to seeing that in the future. And once, I also want to say thank you.
I think that concludes item number two. Mr. Skeet, would you introduce item number three?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Today, I think, I'm trying to get some slides up, but today, before, before the slides come up, today I wanted to bring forward to you for a public discussion the concepts that I have been discussing with Mr. Jamison over the last month, and seek some guidance from you to move those concepts into, into, into an agreement that we can now then bring forward to you for review and approval. I want to reiterate today that we have no draft agreement, we have no agreement in place at this point for you to review what I'm presenting to you, or the concepts that we have been discussing. And I need to move, get some consensus from the group right now to move those, these concepts into, to move these concepts into an agreement that we can then bring forward and make public, for you and the public to review and discuss and vote on at a later date. The, the slides that are, the four, five slides that I'm going to present to you today are basically the comparisons of the two, of the agreement that was approved in June, and the conceptual changes that we have been discussing, that we will now look for guidance to move forward. The June agreement, the agreements as they exist today, that has not been signed, are on the left-hand side of the screen, and the proposed changes are on the right-hand side of the screen. So we're, proposing to move the agreement from a straight twenty-year agreement to a twenty-year agreement with a one-year lease, with a one-five-year renewal option. We've, I've added to the discussion a performance standards for Mr. Jamison and the arena management team. We are discussing forty nights, an anchor, a hockey, of a hockey team with a forty nights per year, and an additional thirty nights of events that would be performed during the fiscal year. The management fee, the management fee would be reduced by about, by thirty thousand dollars for every non-hockey event below the thirty minimum standards that we, that we are proposing and discussing. Back the other way. One of the key components that led us to the discussion, that led us to the discussion about the need for renegotiation of the, of the deal, is the payment structure that was in the original deal. The payment structure in the original deal, as you can see, called for the first year being seventeen million dollars, and the next four years be twenty million dollars, and eighteen for five through seven, and so forth. I focused my discussions with Mr. Jamison on redistributing those payments and lowering the payments in the first five years of this agreement. We're moving towards an eleven million dollars for the first year, fourteen million dollars per year, two fifteen million dollars for years, three and four sixteen million dollars for year five. By way of comparison, those first five years represents a seventy-one million dollar payment compared to the original agreement that had a ninety-five million dollar payment. The total payment, I would be remiss if I didn't point out to you, the total payments in the first agreements for management fee was three hundred million dollars over twenty years. The proposed reconstructed agreement has a total payment of three hundred and eight million dollars for management fees.
Wait, tell me that again.
The total payment in the, of the agreement in the, on the left-hand side was three hundred million dollars for the original agreement. In the, in the proposed agreement, the payments for management fee is totals three hundred and eight million dollars.
That's changed from the three eighteen, three twenty.
Those just the management fees. I'm going to talk about, the next step is, I'm going to talk about the capital improvement payments that we have, that was in the original agreement. The next slide, please. The original agreement also had included a three hundred, a twenty-four million dollar capital improvement over the twenty years. This, the proposed agreement that we are discussing now has a twelve million dollar capital improvement. Next slide.
So we're back to the three twenty.
The next slide, the slider, the slider up today now presents a summary of those payments. Summary of those payments are three hundred and twenty-four million dollars over the life of the original deal, and three hundred and twenty million dollars over the proposed deal. With a net present value using a six and a half percent discount rate, and that present value, the net present value numbers of the original deal was two hundred and three point seven million dollars. And that present value in the proposed deal that we are about ready to pen is a hundred and eighty-eight point seven million dollars over the, over the twenty-year life of the agreement, using the same discount rates. I've added, I've added one, a couple other new components to the discussion that was not included in the, in the original agreement, and this is in somewhat of an incentive discussion for six hundred thousand dollars per year for every block of, every additional twenty events over the minimum requirements for non-hockey events. If you remember, in the first slide, I pointed out that we had a performance standards of forty hockey games and at least thirty non-hockey events per year. This incentive, this incentive discussion is for every additional twenty non-hockey events that bring in an average of seventy-five hundred attendees would be rewarded with a six hundred thousand dollar incentive payment. The final new component that is being discussed is, in the event of a lockout or strike for, at any time during the, during the time of this agreement, starting with this year, there would be a sixty thousand dollars per game penalty for every game not played. In future years, we, the penalty will be calculated by using the average revenues for a regular season game in the year prior to the strike or lockout. Those are basically the, the major components of the, of the summary changes that we, that we are discussing. There are a few others that we, that we are still working on that are minor by magnitude and by virtue of the, the discussion to those items so far, but they include better understanding and some layout plans for the fifty-five hundred parking spaces that would be allocated and is designated for the development agreement with Westgate for the, for event nights at the arena. We are also discussing and clarifying some insurance requirements, as well as some permit fee and inspection requirements for the non-hockey events. I anticipate that we can probably come to conclusion and resolution of these events, those additional items in the not, in the not-too-distant future, and forward these concepts on to the city attorney and Mr. Jamison's attorney for additional inclusion into the documentation that would be drafted and brought to you for final, for final review. Concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Could I see that chart again of the yearly payments, please? Yes. Hold on.
Mayor? Councilmember Clark?
Uh, Mr. Skeet, could you provide us with a copy of your slides later?
Mayor, I, I thought you, members of the council, I thought you might have been provided copies at your, at the desk?
We have no copies.
Okay. I certainly would provide these copies to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know probably going to be some discussion, but from what I've heard, I think this greatly improves the agreement as far as the city's concerned, and so I support moving ahead with it. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
I too support moving forward with this. I, I had a meeting with Mr. Tietzel, who represents I-Star and manages the Westgate area, and from discussions with staff and with other principals, it appears that if this Coyotes deal is approved, which I hope it is, that there are new, brand-new possible tenants waiting in the wings, just waiting for this deal to, to make, who intend to locate within Westgate. And I think that would kind of prove out what we've been saying, that the Coyotes are essential as an anchor to keep, not only keep Westgate viable, but to make Westgate thrive and prosper. So I too support moving forward with this Coyotes agreement.
Mr.?
Vice Mayor Fray.
Mr. Skeet, this negotiations, these were new negotiations, strictly with you as interim city manager. You had spoken to us, and you had figures that you presented us and said, these are the figures I could feel comfortable knowing that they work. I believe we should do, have something in writing about if there are X amount of events, you did your research on what you believe was something different about penalty if there, there aren't, well, you put a, how should I say, you set a goal, and you said, this is what you have to meet, or, and if you don't meet it, there's a penalty. So this is something that I would say was, had to be negotiated quite hard to come to an agreement. And are you comfortable with what you just presented to us as the interim city manager to, that would work and, for the city of Glendale, and beneficial to the city and the citizens of Glendale?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Fray, about a month ago, you provided me with directions to renegotiate the, renegotiate the terms and conditions of the, of the agreement that we had approved in June. Starting from that point, reviewing that agreement, I constructed and reviewed that agreement and looked for opportunities to enhance the agreement where possible, recognizing that the difficulties that that agreement, original agreement provided, confronted us with was a seventeen million dollar payment for this year, twenty million dollars for the next three years, and as you can see, with, basically, a lot of the higher payments for managing the arena in the front end of the, of the agreement. And recognizing the difficulty and the financial strain that that would bring to the city, I set out to renegotiate the payment structures for those management agreements to allow for, for us to get some relief in the early years of the agreement in terms of the cash flow situation. I also wanted to recognize and notice that there were a couple other things that may be possible to discuss and introduce to Mr. Jamison and his team, including setting minimum performance standards for him and the management team to provide and deliver to the city, as well as penalties associated with failure to perform at that minimum level. In that discussion, we also included some incentives if he was to overperform in blocks of twenty, of twenty additional events at seventy-five hundred people, so, per attendees per event. I, we worked over the last, over the last month, up until, you know, like I said, we still have a few outstanding issues, minor as they might be, that still has to be resolved and can be resolved, I'm confident, before and during the time as we pen the document that we, that we would bring back to you that incorporates all of these things. But under the circumstances, this is the best possible scenario that I can, that I can negotiate with Mr. Jamison at this point, with regards to the restructuring of the payments and some of the other things that are involved.
Mayor?
Mayor?
I don't know if Vice Mayor Fray is, has completed his questions or discussion. Vice Mayor?
Well, you've kind of, you...
Tell me when you...
Yeah. You know, you just mentioned about negotiation, and I remember you saying you wouldn't bring anything forward if you didn't feel comfortable that it could be done, and it would meet statutory requirements, it would meet, take the city's position, would be not at, how should I say, you wouldn't put us at risk.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Fray, using the standards you used to evaluate the statutory requirements and the gift clause analysis, this disagreement does not violate any and will not violate any of those, since the net present value and the overall savings or the overall cost to the city has been reduced by at least fifteen million dollars for a net present value analysis. However, I've not taken this to the next level and actually had this analysis done by the economic experts, but using that as a criteria and a measure and a yardstick for financial, for the financial components of the transaction. The net present value for the original deal was penciled out using the same six and a half percent at two hundred and three point seven million dollars. The net present value of this proposed agreement is one hundred and eighty-eight million, seven, point seven million, one hundred and eighty-eight point seven million, as a net present value analysis, which is a mechanism and a tool used to basically, over the twenty years, establish a constant value, a constant value to determine over twenty years if the, if the values are comparable or not. And fundamentally, it does not matter at this point with those, with the difference between this, this proposal and the original proposal, what discount percentage we use, there will continue to be a positive spread on behalf, on behalf of the city between this proposal and the, and the last proposal. There would always be less based on the way how these payments are proposed to be disposed.
And this conclusion has nothing to do with the revenues, or doesn't include the revenues generated at Westgate, or how that affects the, the deal at all or anything?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, this, this proposal did not basically entertain and engage any of the auxiliary ancillary revenue streams that might be generated by the surrounding businesses. This was purely a discussion and an evaluation of the terms and conditions of the management agreement. So any, any supporting revenues, any ancillary revenues that might be generated from the Westgate and the businesses around were not considered as part of this analysis. from the Westgate and the businesses around were not considered as part of this analysis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm done.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yeah, I'm looking at the agreements. The existing says 324, and the proposed is 320. And then, so, we went, we made a, a gain there. But then on this, 600,000 for every additional event, we're gonna, that was not in the existing contract, so that's something that, that we have to pay, it's a different, we, a difference we will have to pay out. And then, in, in the event of a lockout, then we, they have to pay us 60,000 per game, right? So, I see that as, as a, we're paying him more than he's paying us. So, is there any other negotiations that you could do with a 60,000 lockout? Because if it's for, a lockout would take a year, we would be losing a lot of money.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, the 60,000 dollars per game lock penalty for, for any games not played in, in this, in this year represents a, a per games, a per game computation, computation. The 600,000 dollars is for 20 events, not one event, it's, it's for 20 events. So that would be, by, by way of comparison, it would only be, it would be the equivalent of $30,000 per event. So, so the incentive is half of what we would be paying. The difference between the two would be about 50% between the penalty for a hockey game not played and the per game and the per event incentive offered.
So we would get that for the 20, but then in addition to the sales for the tickets, the sales tax?
The, the, the incentive, I'd say, the incentive offered in blocks of 20. If I may, may I explain this again, just, just for clarif, clarification? If, if the management team is only able to successfully deliver 19 events during the fiscal year over the minimum standards of 30, there would be no incentive paid. The incentive would only be paid if he delivers more than 20, or 20 events over, and that, that would be the amount that would pay. That represents an average attendance of about 75 attendee, 7,500 attendees per event over the 20 events. That, in, in ticket surcharge and possible, and sales tax associated with those events, that represents slightly less than 50% of the potential revenues that we can, would be collecting.
I have a, a request. I would like to have you or the attorney explain elections for approval of franchise, and what's the difference with this contract and a franchise? This way, the public would, right now, there is a misunderstanding of franchise.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, before I ask the attorney to, to explain the franchise, I would just want to clarify, the, the term franchise used in, in, in and around the hockey, in and around hockey is really, the, the hockey team is a franchise of the NHL, not the city. This is just simply a, a management agreement between the city and a, a management company to, whose obligation is to bring a franchise, a hockey franchise to, to the, to the arena. I don't think that has anything to do with the election process for franchise agreements. But I'll turn that over to Mr. Tinder for clarification.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, I, I think Mr. Skeet is correct. I mean, it, there, there is a requirement for an election where the utility franchise is granted by the city. As Mr. Skeet said, we're not granting, we're not granting a franchise at all, but we're not, certainly not granting a utility franchise that would invoke the provisions of both the Constitution and the statute regarding election for franchises.
Okay, so the charter states franchise, so there is no conflict with that?
Now, Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, again, when we're talking about franchise and franchise elections, those are referring to utility franchises for our allowance for utilities to go into our right of ways.
Well, because it says franchise and public utilities. This is the, the, what's being said out in the community, and I just wanted for you to explain that we're not doing anything in, in violating the charter.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, that's, that's correct. We're not granting any type of franchise.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Lieberman.
Thank you, yes, three or four things. I too had a long, extended conversation with Mr. Tietzel yesterday. One thing bothers me. We had a hockey team in there that played 48 nights a year, which is the longest they have ever played because they played two playoff rounds in Glendale, and I'm glad they did. It bothers me that Mr. Tietzel tells me, even with all that hockey, and the best star has had the management for I-STAR for approximately one year, they're still at only 50% occupancy. I, I just have a hard time understanding why none of the top 15 businesses in America, Kohl's, Home Depot, Costco, Walmart, Penny's, what have you, has never taken a business in Westgate. And that is a mystery to me. I, point number two, I want to tell you that I think you have done an excellent job in what you have come up with. As I have told you, David Schultz from Globe Mail in Toronto had it backwards. He thought we were loading it heavy on the front end. We are not. You're loading it average on the tail end of it. I do appreciate that. However, point number three, I believe that a better management for the arena can be found without laying out 320 million for a hockey team. Mr. Tietzel said one of the reasons he's having a hard time is because this is not settled yet, and some major businesses may not want to come in until the agreements are all settled. And yet, Tangier came in, and I'm delighted for them. They are advertising, pardon, 80 stores, and that just pleases me no end. And they're working day and night to get it open. Next month, as a matter of fact, they're only six weeks away from opening, and I'm very pleased with that. But in general, I do not believe personally that hockey will come close to building Westgate. It has not in all the years. We had this discussion in 2001 in November when we started it, and when we brought the team in from Scottsdale, the mayor had long talks with Elman and brought the team in from Scottsdale. We still haven't got more than a 50% occupancy. I'm missing something, but I don't know what I'm missing. Thank you.
Mr. Skeet, thank you for all the work that you've done. You're accurate that we met and the whole council did, and talked about what would make the agreement approved in June better for the city versus better for the hockey team owner. And you did go out and address all of those issues. I'd like to talk about one of them, and then I'd like to give my perspective on when is the appropriate time to go forward with giving direction. The thing about the performance requirement came out a little bit on the negative side versus on the positive. So basically, what it lays out, that is, if, for whatever reason, if it was more profitable to not be in the event production business, Mr. Jamison could basically pay us $900,000 for a year and produce no events. That's the way it, it works out. $30,000 a year for every event that is not produced of the 30 that we are saying we expect from him. So is 900,000 the total amount of revenue that we expect to derive from within the arena and outside when there are events there? Is that how we got to that? Because that seems like a, you know, if, if somebody didn't want to have the expenses of putting on events, pay 900,000 dollars and you just don't do any events.
Mayor, members of the council, no. 900, 900,000 dollars is not a reflection of the potential, the owning potential of 30 events at the arena. I said, the, the calculations of the fees, the penalties, and the incentives were limited to basically activities within the arena and, and my estimation of the cost of activities within the, within the arena. So that would be revenues lost from ticket, from sales tax on ticket sales concessions and the surcharge that, that would have, that would, that we would have gotten if there was an event in the arena.
And can you estimate what that would be for 30 events?
The 30, 30 events, the average hockey game, which is-
No, this is non-hockey.
I, 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 I'll, I'm just sharing with you how I came up with the 30,000 dollars per event. I, I, again, I used the, the, the average number of events that, and, and including hockey, and, and you, and came up with, and took an average of both of those. The average hockey game produce, brings about 9,000 people to, 9,000 people to the, to, to the arena for regular season. When, if we were successful and went into the playoffs and had eight sold-out nights, the average hockey event would, would raise to about 11,000 per, per game. I used the regular season numbers. I also used the average attendance for the non-hockey events, which was somewhere in the 4,000 to 5,000 range. Using those numbers, I calculated what would be the loss for, for, the, the loss of revenue, direct revenues coming out of the arena as a result of those activities. And that's how I came up with a non-hockey event at 30,000 dollars and the hockey event at 60,000 dollars.
So if there were no non-hockey events produced, for whatever reason, you're saying the 900,000 dollars that he would be required to pay us would be about the equivalent of what we would have earned in ticket surcharges and sales taxes inside the arena? That's what 30 events is worth to us in revenue?
That, that's correct, Mayor.
Not nearly as much as I thought it was.
Again, this, this does not include any of the activities in the, in the, in the mall.
Okay. So for me, I think the appropriate thing to do is to look at this in terms of the overall budget that we've been looking at. And Vice Mayor was asking you, "Are you comfortable? We can afford it?" and so forth. Your staff did give us the slides, and, and I can see why maybe they were reluctant to give them all to us because the slides include projections of-
Mayor, that's no excuse. They were not supposed to be withheld.
Well, I didn't know if it was because they didn't want us to move ahead or whatever, but for me, I can't say, "Yes, go ahead with this," or "Don't go ahead with this" until we get to the four slides that show the effect on the whole city budget of team stays, team goes, sales tax stays, sales tax goes. And, and, you know, I think it's really incumbent, well, no matter what is said on the dais, the public, a, a great percentage of the public cannot unlock the sales tax increase from the Coyotes payment. It, it's just, for whatever reason, maybe because they hear too much information that tells them that they're locked together. How we proceed forward is going to be very, very, very important in guiding our residents and how they're going to vote on the disastrous proposition 457. You're doing a great job, your staff's doing a great job of showing that, that, that sales tax is needed to keep the city that we know, although there are some streamlining things that can be done to make greater efficiencies. But as soon as we move forward with the arena lease, that's going to come back into the picture as being the reason why the tax increase is needed. So I suggest we look at the four scenarios that you have. I mean, if, if there's a council direction to move ahead with this, these draft concepts, then that's what it'll be. For me, I think we should look at how it plays out with the numbers.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Fray.
Mr. Skeet, you were giving us figures of 9,000 attendees for, for the season. You were use, obviously using the last year's attendance with no owner, no, how should I say? The team's going to be leaving, nobody, you know, we had so many rumors of the, this team should have been in Canada 18 months ago, according to some people. So with a stable, and I'm just saying with a stable owner, and knowing that the team is going to stay, there's money to be made, and, and easily more tickets will be sold than 9,000, suites will be sold, more people attend. Even if it goes up from 9,000 to 15,000 average, or 14,000, you'll see a substantial spike in revenue on tickets. So I just wanted to, you know, the number seems low, but then when you look and see why it's low is because there was so much uncertainty. Obviously, you look at the Diamondbacks this year, you know, once they, their season was fluctuating, you know, they've been averaging 20, 24,000 people. They haven't even, that's almost 50% that, you know, that they've been filling the seats, and it has a lot to do with, you know, the team winning or losing. You look at the Cardinals, they've been sold out, and, you know, you, you see the overflow coming over into Westgate and the people that are in the entertainment district. And I happened to be there this past Sunday, and, so I was really pleased to see everyone that was there, even the Dolphin fans that should have gone home upset and angry. They stayed and they ate and they, they, they came and enjoyed themselves, even though they were dejected. So what I'm saying is, 9,000 seems low, but it is what it is, but it, you have to look back, and why was it 9,000 average? Uncertainty. You know, they, no one wanted to buy a suite because they didn't know if they're going to have a season, if there were going to be, you know, a game or whatever. So it can only get better, is I guess what I want to say, the projections. That's all I wanted to add.
Can you tell me, though, as it, it can only, sure, I agree, it'll only get better, but are, the forecasts of ending fund balances in these new projections are a lot lower than what we had even two weeks ago in scenario 1, 2, 3. What, what would that be? The, what would the reason for that be?
Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, moving, moving to those slides, we, we would discuss some changes. I'll point out some changes in, in the revenue projections and, and some other things that, that, that has become clearer as, as we went along. And I, I didn't intend, and intend to or attempt to just simply boost the, the fund balance from one slide to another, but rather just hold them as constant as possible so that the comparisons between the different scenarios became clearer and not skewed by an attempt to, to, to build a fund balance. Clearly, the fund balances that we will discuss and we will look at in those slides would be, in, in my estimation, way too low as we go forward. be, in, in my estimation, way too low a, as we go forward. So, so they would, we would need to make adjustments to those fund balance and those, those reductions and changes in our expenditure habits or improve our, the Glendale economy and the revenue side of this in order to, to be able to, to build a fund balance that I am comfortable with. But as presented, as will be presented in the coming, upcoming slides, those are by no means recommended fund balances. Those were just kept that low for consistency and comparison purposes.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we move into any further slides, I think it's important to recognize that we gave you direction to renegotiate the lease management agreement with Mr. Jamison. I think you have accomplished that. I think that Mr. Jamison has shown his willingness to participate in the future of Glendale and his willingness to accommodate our interests considering our current budget scenarios. I think that it is time to give direction, since you have accomplished what, what you set out to do and if we are comfortable with it, that we send a strong signal that, that we are ready to move forward and sign a final agreement with Mr. Jamison and to remove that uncertainty as to whether the hockey team stays or goes. So I, for one, would give direction, and I'm only one of seven, but I, for one, would give direction that we move forward as soon as possible and consummate the deal, the lease management arrangement with Mr. Jamison. Thank you.
Okay, I have three who have given direction to move forward at this time. Councilmember Knack, did you wish to check in on this?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do think we actually need to look at this, the money. Now, I, I think we really need to put it out on the table at this point. So I agree with you, Mayor, I think we need to look at it. Now, I may not change my mind as far as giving direction for the deal, but I think this needs to be put out here. And then the decision I will make will be one of everything's there and even I still may support the Coyotes and it may cost the city some money. That's a decision I'll make, but I think this needs to be put out there. I really do. I think it's time. Too many people, and, and also take into consideration that the numbers you're giving us, there's not a revenue, the revenue out there from Westgate or any, these are just expenditures. So I would like to have that looked at.
Councilmember Alvarez.
I disagree with the comment that was made that Mr. Jamison, he took his time in making a decision. We've been waiting for, it was a year ago, I think, that he had different comments. So he is not as stable as I would want him to have been. So I don't know, I don't feel comfortable. I'm not for investing money in the Coyotes and, and leaving our services that we, that our constituents have already paid taxes to. But I, I disagree that Mr. Jamison was waiting and, because he wasn't. First of all, he didn't have the money to buy the Coyotes, and that's the other question. Did he buy the Coyotes already?
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, to the best of my knowledge, no.
Say.
Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank you, Mr. Skeet, because you have done what you were asked to do to renegotiate the, the agreement. And as I said earlier, I think it puts us in a lot better position. I also want to say, though, that with respect to the Westgate and their area out there, that the, and the businesses that have indicated, they're kind of waiting in the wings for to know definitely that the Coyotes are staying. I also had a conversation with Mr. Tietzel, and it's, it's apparent that, you know, Tanger came in, that's, it's going to be, it's going to be a great project. And I remember saying a long time ago when we first heard that, that I think that would be the catalyst that really is going to start things moving out there again. And with us going ahead with the agreement, I think that would solidify and bring on those added, added business, businesses that are out there just waiting to hear that this deal is done. So I would support going ahead with it. Now, I don't know that there's going to be the support for it, but I would ask if, you know, when we get through this process and say that there is consensus, to go ahead with it and authorizing you to sign the agreement, you know, down the line if it goes that way. Once that agreement, if it were to be signed, I mean, it would not be signed until the, we knew for certain that the, Mr. Jamison was the owner of, of the Coyotes. Isn't that correct?
Right.
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, the agreement has a contingency in it that requires Mr. Jamison to consummate his purchase of the franchise from the league. So we could sign the agreement, but it wouldn't be effective. Nothing would happen, we wouldn't have any obligations until that contingency is fulfilled.
Okay. Well, that's, I just wanted to get it out there that that's, even though that we might be, we might approve it here and, but would be authorizing these managers to, to sign it once we know that they actually own the team. So, okay, thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I, I would also like to, like, like to re, basically reiterate the fact that what you are, the consensus and direction that you're providing is for me to turn these conceptual points over to the city attorney and Mr. Jamison's attorney to, to basically pen an agreement. We, we do not have an agreement. We, we've seen how much difficulties there are possible, that possible occurs when, when we start going into the interpretations of these one-liners. And, and those, those, I think it's, it's important that we, we, we bring those back to you in great, and with enough time, with ample time for you to review those and the wooden associated with these, with, with these concepts to make sure that, that you're in agreement. So the idea is to move, if the consensus is, and whichever way it goes, it's not for me to go ahead and sign an agreement. It is for me to basically pen, have the attorneys pen an agreement that I can bring back to you for further and detailed review. So I think that's important that I, that I mention that.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you for that clarification. I would hope that this, let me ask a question before I say what I'm going to say. How long ago did we notify Mr. Jamison that we wanted to rework the deal? Was it about a month, six weeks ago?
Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin.
About that time?
Yes.
Okay. So in the past month to six weeks, you and Mr. Jamison have been able to come to agreement on the major points in a lease management agreement?
An understanding.
An understanding. Okay. Now it's time for the attorneys to go to work. I love the attorneys, but I hope they will not take six months to hammer out what are essentially changes to the payment schedule and changes in terms of penalty and performance. Basically, would I be correct in the assumption that the rest of the deal or, or the original agreement stays the same and we're looking at just changes in, in two major areas? Would that be correct?
Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin, there, there are a number of other minor clarification issues that has to be, that, that has to be resolved. And, and as we, as, as we change and try to pen these, might, what might be seen as, as four or five points, they might have ripple effects and implications throughout the rest of the agreement that would have to be reviewed in that context and then, and then tweaked if necessary.
Okay. And I understand that that's perfectly logical, but I would just hope that we could resolve this entire situation in a timely fashion and, and send the message that, that this is as important to us as it is to others. And I think I want to make one point that you said last time when we met and we're talking about the budget. And I know we're going to take up these slides in a few minutes, but I think you indicated that keeping the Coyotes was critical in terms of restructuring our bond debt because that sent a signal, a level of confidence to the bond market that, for want of a better term, we were getting our act together and that the situation seemed to be resolving in our community. Is that basically what I heard the, the last time we discussed restructuring of debt? Because I know in, in all of these slides that you present today, they all assume a restructuring of the debt, yet I believe I heard you say last time, if that, if we had no team, our ability to restructure the debt is virtually nil. And yet, two of these slides represent a debt that is restructured, yet there is no team. Could you comment on that?
Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin, you're going to force me into those slides whether I want to or not.
Yes, I know.
I, I just want to correct, correct, maybe correct and, and restate, restate my, what I said about the, the, the opportunity and the possibility for restructuring the debt. Restu, the, the information and reaction that we got from the bond market and the finance, and the, the rating agencies and, and, and the financial firms that are responsible for selling debt, for, for selling our debt, debt in the, in the financial market was, not so much that we had to set, we, we had to have an agreement with the Coyotes, but rather that we had to settle the decision one way or the other. It was important for them to know that the decision was made whether we were going to keep the Coyotes and work out a management agreement or not keep the Coyotes and, and move on to some other alternative. I think I might have indicated at that time, and I probably still feel that to not have the Coyotes and the, the long-term financial benefit and stability that the Coyotes would bring to the Westgate area might influence the actual rates that we might be able to achieve in the, in the finance market. But it, it, I don't think if we were to make a decision the other way and not have the Coyotes, we won't be able to refinance it, that we might not be able to demonstrate a, a stronger, long-term financial position, and it might therefore influence the rate of interest that we might pay. But refinancing, and, and as I may, if, if, as I may, and when I get into the discussions as to why I chose to show that the refinancing option is available and would be available to us in all of the scenarios, that really was the, the consideration that I included.
Let me, can, may I follow up, Mayor? Let me ask another question. I believe that in previous slide, in previous discussions of budget and the ability to restructure, I believe the figure that you anticipated restructuring would save the city would be around eight million. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin, that was about eight million dollars in cash savings, cash flow savings.
Exactly.
The, and the, the numbers that, that I'm seeing today in terms of a cash flow analysis is somewhere in the, over the, if we were to restructure some, about $300 million in outstanding debt, which is eligible for restructuring at this point, we would be able to possibly net present value savings of somewhere between 32 and 35 million dollars and a cash flow savings somewhere between 25 and 28 million dollars.
So that's really important to us.
Over what years? How many years?
The, the attempt, Mayor and Councilmembers, is to basically achieve that, that 28, 25 to 28 million dollars in cash flow savings over the, over the next three years.
That's, now, and you said the rates would vary, dependent, dependent upon whether the team stays. We set out the signal that we're ready to move forward and, and move forward with the Coyotes, or we make a decision to reject the Coyotes. That that will, that may very well affect the rate that we end up getting or paying, correct?
That's correct, Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin, because the, the presence of the Coyotes bring a, a certain, a certainty and, and assurance of a certain level of revenue streams that would not be there if we didn't have them.
So then that leads to my last question. Do these four slides reflect varying rates dependent upon the team staying or team going?
No.
So it's one constant rate, whether the team stays or goes, but you have just said that the rate may vary dependent upon whatever signal we send out, whatever our decision is in the future, correct?
That's correct.
So, and these slides have a built-in error in that you use the same rate no matter what the scenario is?
Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin, these, these slides reflect my inability to predict the future.
I understand, thank you.
Mayor.
I'd just like to-
Wait, I've been trying to say something for several minutes. I've had my hand up. You have let everybody else speak. Can I get some words in here? Yes, yes, now.
I guess so.
Yes, I am, I am. I've stood here and stood here, I've sat here and sat here.
I'm sorry, I don't raise my hand when I want to speak.
I went outside, I came back, I still got my hand up, and you have not recognized me.
I did not see your hand up before you went out. Please, talk as long as you want.
Thank you, I will. I don't agree with Councilmember Clark at all. There are certain equities called debt service and equity that makes up what bond ratings you have. I am not the richest man in the world, but I have arranged financing for over $5 million a year in debt service for floor planning, for product purchased. I know exactly what they think. Let's take one thing at a time, and let's take number one first. Some of the institutions that they deal with, that we deal with, may not think the Coyotes are an asset. They may see the Coyotes are a liability. What counts is when we restructure our, our bonds and we are having a hard time restructuring our baseball diamonds and we're having a hard time selling lend lease and leaseback because we do not have the quote, credit, unquote, for the debt service. That's much more important of how we pay our bills, and debt service is also based on probable income, probable cause for income. And that's where the hitch came in with the Coyotes, because we don't make a thing called profit on the Coyotes. We lose money every year on the Coyotes. Debt service, let's take the baseball. We owe 441 million, and as a matter of fact, that figure is frightening because it's 7.2 million, that's 36,800 a year additional interest, and we're paying 14 million down. So in my mind, unless there is some clause, otherwise, we are going in further debt, not less debt. And again, number one, does a bank, Bank America, that we owe 441 million, do they see the Coyotes as an asset or a loss? That's up to them. They may review it differently. But again, and you did agree, the Coyotes have nothing to do with it. It's how we pay our bills. So far, we have managed to retain good credit and that we are, I believe, not delinquent at this stage in any of our bonds, whether it be munis- at this stage in any of our bonds, whether it be municipal property bonds or whether it be the bonds that built this place, we are where we should be for them. And that's excellent. We have done an outstanding job. But I can't in any way see where it has based on the coyotes because not everybody may see that. Not all financial institutions that are willing to assume four hundred and forty million in debt see it as a liability. Now, when we're talking about money, and let's talk about money, I discussed this with our attorney, Mr. Tyndall, who did not agree with me. I want to know who Jamison's partners are. I want to know who Jamison's investors are. We're going to go into a deal with him for more money than any other deal we have ever made in our lifetime. Uh, I understand he has LeBlanc from, uh, research in motion, also Ice Age. Is LeBlanc a partner or an investor? Who else is his investors and partners? And I think as a city who is willing to go into a twenty-year agreement with a person who has so far taken sixteen months since the twenty-first of June, twenty-eleven, where my notes tell me that's the first time you presented the three hundred and ten million to us that Jamison wanted, he has not bought, for whatever the reason, the coyotes. So again, I will go back and say, I want to know who his partners are. I want to know who his, uh, investors are. There's a difference because a partner may have stock in the firm, an investor may, or may not, may just be making an investment, although the legal term investor, he could be a partner investor, in which case he has a right to sit on the board. Who are Jamison's board members? Who's chairman of the board? Is Jamison chairman of the board? Is Jamison CFO? Is Jamison CEO? Does he hold both positions? If he does not hold both positions, who does hold the position of CFO? Who is his bank that he's buying from or borrowing from? We should know that. We're giving him one of our largest facilities and we have no idea of the financial background. And again, a term called debt service. Debt service simply means how well can you pay your bills? That's more important than what goes on with the coyotes. In my mind, I have never financed a hundred million. I've never financed twenty million. I'm not that big a businessman. I'm a little businessman. But I know what it is to have five million on your doorstep and it's not pleasant at times. They want to know. Matter of fact, in floor planning, as an example, they come check you twice a month to make sure you haven't sold product and conveniently forgot to pay them for the product. They want to know. I want to know the same thing. Now, go ahead, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, before, if, if, if I may, just indulge me for, for a minute.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I would just like to, to clarify. You have said on, on a number of occasions that the debt on the baseball facility is over four hundred million dollars. The amount of the debt that we have on the baseball facility is two hundred million dollars.
I can show you.
Not four hundred, not four hundred. The four hundred million dollars that you're referring to is the payment schedule, not the principal debt outstanding.
In, in thirty years, you are correct. We owe, there, there are two other legal terms that have to do with borrowing money, interest and principal. The principal on the baseball diamonds is exactly what we borrowed on it five and a half years ago, a hundred and ninety-nine million. The thirty-year payment, I am agreeing with you. If we pay it out, that the interest as we agreed to pay, the total indebtedness at this minute that must be refinanced is not the two hundred million, it's the four hundred and forty-one million that's owed. But you are correct. On itself, there's a hundred and ninety-nine, six twenty-four or something like that owed on it.
And Mayor and Councilmember Lee, that would be the amount that we would refinance, not the, not the principal, not the principal and interest payment due in thirty years. That would be the amount that would be refinanced.
I will agree with you on that also. You are correct. But that isn't what we owe at this minute. What do we owe, for instance, on the arena where we all, are, and are we trying to restructure the bond debt on the arena? Uh, we borrowed, what, a hundred and seventy-eight million or something to begin with? What is our indebtedness? And, and I don't care to know right this minute, but I'm making a point. How much is it that we owe more than a hundred and seventy-eight million that we borrowed or to, to build it? Thank you.
I, I really don't want to talk about any of the technical aspects of, of how interest works or whatever, and, and don't, um, present myself as an expert in that. I wanted to talk about this in its most basic way. Last night, I received in my mail, and perhaps many of you did too, an eight and a half by eleven mailer, purple, green and white. And you opened it up and it's four-fold. It has a very simple, clear message, and that is that, um, City of Glendale will have the highest tax rate in the United States, something like that, that, um, the citizens have an opportunity to rid themselves of this very high tax rate. And it, it's a very simple, clean message, and the, and the whole thing is to vote yes on Proposition 457. I voted against the sales tax increase and I voted against the budget in June because I felt both of them were not truthful. Uh, since then, there's been a lot of scrubbing done on that budget. And I do feel that what has been presented to us in the last couple of weeks, September twelfth, September twenty-fifth, does actually reflect what it costs to deliver not only core services, but quality of life services to our citizens, our businesses and our visitors in this city. There are some efficiencies that Mr. Skeed has, has, and his staff have found, and he's going to go into those later, and, and those are going to be recommended to be, to happen regardless, and that's all in this material. I don't have a crystal ball here. And, um, and that's good. And there has been a lot identified through all this, but I think the important thing that we have identified is that, uh, the City of Glendale will not have the same quality of public safety services, nor any other of the amenities that people want when they live here, to live here, if that tax increase goes away. There's been a, um, a, um, very diligent effort to straighten out all the things that were either, um, not, not able to be substantiated in the June budget or outright lies. And, uh, so I'm feeling a lot more comfortable with this. Now, taking this a step further, there is, um, the Proposition 457 that's out there. And in some ways, and I think in a lot of ways, and we hear about it and we read about it, and I, some people maybe don't ever hear anybody say it, but, um, there is a general feeling that we entered into things, we, the city council, entered into things carelessly, without a lot of thought, without a lot of discussion. And that's the way we, um, that was the mode of operation for the past few years. We may have discussed it in executive session, but not fully out in the open. And, um, it is my belief, and I hear this from people who talk to me, that, that built distrust and lost a lot of our credibility. So when I asked that we look at these four charts before there be a direction, go ahead and sign on to the coyotes, I did it with the thought that it might help our efforts to do what is the most important thing to us, and that is to retain the revenue that is needed to run the city at the level and the quality that people have grown to expect and that people want. Because to just go ahead and say, yes, go, this is what we want, we're done, but not look at it in a full view of how it impacts the city, the, our budget going forward over the years, I think lends credence to the belief that a lot of people already have, that we just charge into things and really don't, um, look at the consequences fully. So, um, this was, my suggestion was not intended to be either a support for or opposition to Mr. Jamison, but rather a call for us to work differently than we have for the past several years and hopefully build, rebuild some of the credibility we've lost and reassure those residents who sit here loyally with us and, and stand by us and speak for us and, and reassure them and, so that they can talk to their friends and, and, uh, in it, with more comfort. So, I wanted to explain why I was, as you said, pushing you to those slides. I just think for us to just go charging forward on this one topic without looking at everything as it plays out in the numbers will reaffirm some people's belief that we just don't, um, just don't look at things as well as we should. Thank you for the time.
Mayor, members of the council, i- if, if it pleases the council at this point, I would now move into those slides and those discussions because I think, um, we, we've heard from, from councilmembers with regards to the proposed amendments to the agreement. So, uh, I would like to introduce the, the next series of slides that discusses four scenarios and take a look, look at four scenarios that, that, that reflects the changes and the possibilities. And I, I will take some time to explain some of the assumptions that I've made in, in developing these scenarios as we go forward, so. Mayor, members of the council, I, I presented to you almost a month ago now, four, three scenarios, I think I did at the time, um, that, that explained, uh, uh, that showed you a five-year picture of the different possibilities that may have existed and could be, could be confronting us should the sales tax, should the seven-tenths of a sales tax be removed from our revenue streams immediately rather than five years as, as, as it was currently approved. Um, generally, the, the slides that I'm going to show you today reflects fundamentally the same, the same information with a few different assumptions and corrections. And you, you would see that the range of, the range of, of possibilities, um, uh, as is pointed out on this slide, shows from, from zero to twenty-nine million dollars. Before I go any further, I would like to say that because the, the seven-tenths of a sales tax has a five-year sunset on it, and because we have predicted and projected that the seven-tenths of a sales tax would bring in about twenty-five million dollars per year over the next five years, the, the, I, I don't want to be misleading when, when I say zero change is, is one possibility. Because we would have, the, the zero change would be the immediate action or lack of, or no action that we'd have to take. We would have to, if the sales tax remains for the five-year period, we would have to systematically, and we will be given an opportunity over the next five years to wean ourselves off and reduce and, and, and retweak our operating expenses to adjust for any, any loss in revenues that would result after the sales tax go away. So, again, this is one of those unknowns that I was, uh, I, I was not comfortable predicting and putting into, in, into the, into the scenarios that I presented here to you. While I've included a three and a half percent growth, a possibility, in, in these scenarios, um, I, I am hoping that if we have five years to revisit this on an annual basis, we would be able to better understand exactly how much, based on actuals that we are receiving and reviewing, um, how much we would have to reduce the budget. So, there is, is really no scenario at the end of the day that ends up with zero reductions and life continues as is. Because in five years, some portion of that twenty-five million dollars is not going to be coming into the city's revenue. So, what that is, we would have to, we would have to evaluate annually and, and in a much, we'd have the opportunity to do that in a much more systematic way over the next three, two to three years to begin to predict what, um, for want of a better word, what the cliff, uh, the depth of the cliff would be in five years. So, that's, that, that, that's something that I, I want to make sure that we understand as part of this discussion. The other scenarios and other assumptions that I made along the line here, along the lines is that, um, in, and corrections that I made, in one of the scenarios or two of the, one of the scenarios that I presented to you on Ju-, on September twelfth, um, I used the, I made the assumption that if the sales tax was to go away in, 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 after the November vote and, and be removed from our revenue stream, we would have collected approximately eight million dollars by the time that action is, is, is taken. Um, I erroneously did not remove that eight million dollars from the pre-, from, from the following years as we were evaluating the assumptions. So that's one of the adjustments that I had to make in this scenario here, in, in these scenarios today. So the, the scenario that, that shows the sales tax is going away, the, the, I, in year fourteen, the adjustments were made to allow, to, to, to reflect the accurate reality if the sales tax go away and the eight million dollars is taken out of our revenue stream immediately. That was not done on September twelfth. So that's one of the changes that, that, that I had to correct and, and use this opportunity to correct in the presentation today. The other, the other, the other assumption that I made was that if we were willing to demonstrate the, the need, the, the ability and the, and the desire to make sure that we balance our budget in a, in a responsible manner by making the hard cuts in the operating expenses that, that we would have to do if the sales tax were to be, be removed in November from, from the revenue streams. Um, I, I, I've, after some conversation with, with, with staff, I became comfortable that the finance market would reward us and demonstrate our, and for, from taking that aggressive and difficult action of reducing services across the board and therefore recognizing that, recognizing that action, we would be able to refinance the debt regardless of whether the sales tax stays or, and/or the, the team stays or goes. So, once we, because they consist, one of the consistent things that we hear from the market is you, you, uh, we as a government have to demonstrate the ability and the willingness to make the hard decisions when the hard decisions are needed. So, using that concept, I felt very confident that regardless of our revenue streams and our, and our actions on the, the two other major contributing events to our economy, the coyotes and the sales tax, if, as long as we were willing to demonstrate the ability and, and, and the willingness to cut, make those cuts in our operating expenses, we would be successful to some degree in the market. Now, that is the degree to which I am not able to measure and whether or not we would be able to truly capitalize on the fantastic bond market that exists today because of our reduced revenue streams and therefore we might not be in, in a position to achieve the same thirty-five million dollars projected net present value savings or twenty-five million dollars, uh, in cash flow savings. But, but some, some, somewhere in between where we are and what we could possibly do at maximum is what I think we would be able to achieve. I was not able to, to be comfortable with any number and measuring tool to, to put that number in, into these scenarios. Again, for consistencies, I use the same numbers therefore. So, so those are some, some of the premises that I want to introduce the next four, four slides that, that restates the scenarios that we have, uh, the three scenarios that I presented and. and also present a fourth scenario to you that basically says that whether the, if the team goes, the fourth scenario that I'm adding to today's presentation is if we were to be successful in maintaining the sales tax, restructuring the debt stating is no longer a concern, I think it would be done, could be done. And however, I didn't present a scenario that also showed if that was, if those two things were successful and the team went away and the management fee associated with the team went away, what the scenarios would look like. So I'm presenting those four scenarios to you today for review just to give you some comparisons.
Councilmember Lieberman.
Thank you. One quick question, sir, and these are beautiful. You have the four possibilities well laid out. However, you show on slide one of four, the arena management fee for fiscal year 13 is $17 million, where we have just heard in the previous discussion that it would be $11 million.
Mayor, councilmember Lieberman, the first column in each of these scenarios is the existing agreement, reflects the existing agreements and the existing projections based on this year's budget. The next column over reflects the changes that we would make in, with regards to the arena management. So the second column over, if you look at the top, it also shows an amended FY '13 projection.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that. Thank you. It certainly does, and that's correct. Thank you. I did miss it.
Mayor, members of the council, this scenario basically outlines the best possibility from a revenue stream, from a revenue standpoint where we reflect the inclusion of the seven-tenths of a sales tax all the way across for the five years that the current seven-tenths is approved to be in place. Made a couple of tweaks to the slide compared to last night, last September 12. And this scenario that shows, that basically with the restructure, with the debt restructuring at the projected amounts on the bottom, the sales tax in place and the team stairs with the new management fee projections of '11, '14, '15, '15, and '16, a capital improvement budget for the arena at half a million dollars a year that is also included in this scenario, shows that we would have to do a $6 million reduction in our current base operating budget. If you recall, the last slide showed that $6 million across the last three columns of that reduction column. What I did, instead of showing that, because one of the feedback I got was that that kind of suggested that we had to do an additional $6 million every year. That was not the intent. The intent was, because I was not adjusting the original base, I needed to show it in that format. I think this better reflects the situation. It's a reduction of $6 million in the base, in the base expenses on the first line and it's reflected, that reduction is reflected across the top of the base at that point. So the scenario is, we, and an accurate description of that scenario would be that if these were the circumstances that we were confronted with after November 6, the amount of reductions that would have to be made would be $6 million to the base budget going forward for the next five years in order to achieve a measly $4.4 million in fund balance after five years. I maintain, I show what the recommended targeted fund balance would be and should be at that point. It really should be in the vicinity of $19, $20 million.
Mr. Skeet? Okay, trying to follow this along. In fiscal year '13, we're going to reduce expenditures $3 million. But then when we look at the general fund expenses in fiscal year '14, it goes up from $131 to $133. Is that to reflect increases in inflation or other types of things? I guess I'm wondering why didn't the $131 go down to $128 from '13 to '14?
Mayor, I didn't reduce that, I didn't reduce the $131 by the three because I also have, I also have included in that the $2 million, and this is probably some wrongdoing situations here. The $2 million that was not included for the MOU.
The MOUs.
That accounts for the base year in '14, starting at $133, which, when you basically take the factors out, would be a wrongdoing situation of $133.
Then what made the general fund expenses of $133 million in fiscal year '14 drop to $130.8 million in fiscal year '15? Because you have new MOU expenses coming in again of $3 million?
That $3 million in '15 is reflected in the '16 base budget.
Okay, but my question is, why did '14 jump, drop almost $3 million to '15, from $133 to $130.8? And then if you're saying the $3 million is in fiscal year '16, well, that doesn't take it up to $137.
Mayor, the, the numbers, the numbers reflect the negative, the reduction in the budget plus the increase, plus the increase in, plus the increases for the MOU as well as the 4% for the inflation. So $130.8, if you were to look at the column of $130.8, plus the $3 million in the MOU, plus the $4 million in the inflationary adjustments, that gets you to the $137.8.
Okay, and so let's go back to '14. The $133, and then you take out six makes $127, but you add in inflation and that's how we get up to $130.8? Is that it? Because there's, okay, so in '13, is there an actual reduction of $3 million? And in '14, a different reaction, reduction of $6 million? Or is...
In '13, I kept the one-time scenario in order to basically reflect it for the full fiscal year in '14.
So the $6 million in '14 includes the cuts that were made, the $3 million in '13?
If we were to have wrapped this in that fashion, we would have done $3 million in the base cut in '13, which would result in a half year, and another $3 million on top of that for a total of six. I just kept, I kept the full year for purposes of demonstrating what the full year base reduction would be.
So $6 million total?
$6 million total.
Okay, gotcha.
Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
Mr. Skeet, I appreciate everything that you've done, but I find that these slides are perhaps the most confusing that you've presented to us and to the general public and that they're based on variable assumptions that even you have indicated cannot be predicted. So while I appreciate what you've done, I don't feel comfortable with any of these slides, but I thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Alvarez. I, I'm looking at the slides and I'm looking at the reductions and what's, you know, where we're getting into. You know, not only do we have to look at the numbers, but the consequence of these numbers to the community. You have general fund reductions required and it says to 49 FTEs. And then $40 million operating budget cuts and staffing cuts. Then it goes into public safety cuts. And then we go down to the business decisions. We're going to eliminate the grass programs. The Rose Lane and O'Neil also, close them down. All this, the cuts that we're doing into the different community centers and so forth, and the libraries are going to, are affecting our community. If it affects our community, it affects us also. I don't know how we came to this, but the reason there's so much negative right now towards the sales tax is because of all these cuts and the errors that we did in the past. I can't understand why we would build a ballpark and rent it for $2 a year. You know, that is failure right away. I can't understand why we keep going over and over on talking about removing services. And it was, it was the city. I don't know if it's administration or if it's a council. These kind of decisions are only going to bring us bad luck. And I know that you're going to vote for the, to go ahead with the coyotes, which is fine, you know, I can't fight everybody. But I want you to get, to look at this and also think what's going to happen. If you don't have the police there, if you cut the police or you cut the fire, you're going to have problems because of the services that are being cut, the other services. You know that crime has gone up. You know that kids are more aggressive now than ever. And you still are talking about the $17 million like it was $17. Cutting employment, like these people can find a job right away. And the threats of you're going to lay off, you're going to, you know, people are panicking. And I don't care if you don't listen or that you're going to do whatever you want. But I do care what's happening out there where I live. And we should all care. So in the future, some of you are leaving, but we're staying and we're going to have to face up to this. So I don't want any response. I just, I'm telling you, look at the consequences. Look at the money and where you're going to do the cuts. Nobody thought about the business that you were going to do with building, borrowing money to build a ballpark, but then don't charge for it. And then in Phoenix, to top it all. But no, council didn't do anything wrong. It's time that we started to admit and to start feeling what the neighborhoods are going to experience. So I, you know, I'm tired of looking at the numbers because I'm looking at the results. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anybody who would like to look? The next chart actually would show what the budget would look like if there was no team and no arena management fee. So is there anybody who wants to look at this besides me?
Sure.
Yes, let's look.
Yeah.
And I know you don't want an answer, Councilmember Alvarez, but I'll answer the general public. The reason why we entered into the agreement with, for Camelback Ranch, where we only charge a dollar a year to, for their use of it, is because the information that was presented to those of us who were on the council at the time is that the operating and maintenance costs of Camelback Ranch would be $2 million a year. That's the number I remember, if others remember another. Thank you. And in exchange, if we allowed them to program it the way they wanted with whatever events, which we were told wouldn't be many because they really don't like their grass messed up, that they would bear all the expenses of operating and maintaining Camelback Ranch, that same $2 million a year. So it was presented to us as a very wise decision to not take on an additional $2 million, $2 million a year cost when they were going to control when, how the place was used in the first place because they don't want it used in such a way that messes up their grass and they can't use it when they're there and so forth. So let them program it, let them take the revenues and charge us a dollar a year. So for the general public, I know it's, sounds pretty odd, but that was the information that was made available to us. And I believe there were comparisons that we were, I believe we were shown figures of what other cities who have...
Maintenance costs.
Cactus, yes, Cactus League baseball teams there, what their costs actually were. And from that, we could derive that ours would be the same or more because it's a bigger facility, two teams and so forth. So for the general public and for the employees and for anybody who wants to listen, that's the reason why we went in that method.
Plus, we own the land.
And we own, and we own the land. But the question is, why do we only get a dollar a year? Because we were trading off $2 million a year in expenses. So can you go to then, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lieberman?
To somewhat reinforce what the mayor said, we were misled, including me, by a guy named Rick Burton, who promised us Main Street and said somewhere in between five and seven years, he could create so much retail development that the retail development sales tax would pay the debt service on the ball fields, Camelback Ranch, Glendale. And we believed him. Coincidentally, five months ago, he went bankrupt for $300 million in Las Vegas. He still owes us, according to his figures, $3 million. He was going to do wonders for us. He sold out to Hinden Bannavick, who also was going to create Main Street. So far, since then, in his six years, not a single shovel of dirt has been turned. And as a matter of fact, if I remember correctly, Rick Burton also had a $20 million letter of credit from one of the banks. And that was going to pay after we over-financed, we spent $153 million on, and somebody correct me if they remember better than I do, on the baseball fields, constructing them. We borrowed, as we decided before, $199.68 million. And we used that $48 million to make the first four payments on the baseball diamond. Unbelievably, all four of those payments paid interest. And so far, we have paid $60 million interest. We still owe the $199. That's a side point. We did think, because we were misled by what we thought was a great friend of Glendale and a fine developer, that he was going to produce enough sales tax by the seventh year to cover the $12.2 or $13.2, whichever it is, debt service. And again, he even went, when he began to go downhill, the bank withdrew that letter of credit. We didn't ever get one cent of that $20 million. But in my mind... But in my mind, that's the reason that we went for it, because I included, thought we had it covered. Is that correct?
Yes, and the letter of credit was a stipulation that we put on going forward because we were assured that it would be got, it would be secured, and that was a stipulation. However, the agreement was signed and then we were told it was impossible to get the letter of credit, so. There's a lot of stor- there's a lot of information back there in terms of, there was also going to be a 1,000-room hotel that was going to be started within the first three months. And it was all secured and the nice pictures and, yeah, 1,000-room hotel and.
I have those pictures.
I know. Okay, so are we ready to go to, I guess it gets down to trusting too much. We trusted and believed the people who were in the position and had the responsibility, accountability and authority to advise us. Would you like to go to scenario two?
Scenario number two, mayor and members of the council reflects the, the sales tax and the debt is refinanced with the same assumptions that I know Councilmember Clark is not comfortable with. And however, this one does not include a payment, a management agreement with, with Mr. Jameson, but rather, another assumption that I made of $6 million as the management fee that we would, we would possibly have, have to pay without an anchor tenant. So, those are the, those are the two assumptions in here that, again, I need to reiterate. The $6 million management fee is, is simply a guess on my part. It's not based on any market analysis. It's based on, on, on information I've collected and evaluated that was two or three years old. We have not tested this scenario. I do not know if the management fee, if we were to put it out to bed, would come in at 6 million, 4 million or 8 million. I picked a number in the middle of the estimates that I've saw from, from other places. I think it's a, it's, it's, it's an estimate that could be of one way or another, but it's certainly within the range of, of possibilities. So, again, that's, that's the assumption that I made when I, when I plugged that number in. And that, that scenario reflected, again, only a $5 million fund, 5.6 million fund balance at the end of this exercise. And it, it, it does, however, reflect a reduction in, in year 14 for the 2.5 million dollars of lost revenues from, from the, not, from the, inside the arena. And no impact analysis was done on what the impact of the loss of the team and 40 nights would have on West Gate. We have seen, you have seen those numbers in previous, in previous presentations where the activities at West Gate is, is, some assumptions were made that as high as 40% of the revenues generated at the restaurants in, in, in the West Gate area and the sales generated in the West Gate area is as a result of the anchor tenant. The, the numbers here does not reflect any of those, those assumptions. So, so while I show zero reduction, this is, this is the one, this is the one that I'm probably less comfortable with because of the missing assumptions and the missing information in the assumptions that I, that I was not comfortable in projecting and predicting. So, while the numbers, again, for consistency, were applied throughout the four scenarios, there are some assumptions and some revenue opportunities and, and loss that was not reflected in this, other than the hard numbers that I could have calculated from the, from the, within the walls of the arena. So, that scenario, however, shows that there would be no need for an immediate reduction. Again, this goes back to the scenario where, in the, at the end of five years, however, the 189.9 million dollars in revenue projected here includes a $25 million sales tax, seven tenths of a sales tax collection that will not be there in year 2017.
Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Skeet, and I just, again, want to ask you, the, we have it here, but the, the management fee of, of $6 million, that's good. But still, we would have under this scenario, we would have to make up that, we would still have a deficit, would we not?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, it is reasonable to assume that we would have something of a deficit based on, based on the lack of information that I, that I have in terms of the, my inability to segregate the revenues that is directly associated with the 40, 40-plus nights of an anchor tenant associated with the arena. That may, may not be materialized with a new arena manager.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm going to have to ask you to explain something again. Under expenditures, back to scenario two, the second line, expenditure reduction, shows nothing, but yet you told us earlier, there is no scenario under which there would be no expenditure reduction. How should I be reading that line that has nothing going across?
Mayor, councilmembers, the, the, the zeros that I show on that scenario is basically the, it basically reflects the, my, the information I have. I do not have accurate and reliable information as to what would be the revenue change if we don't have 40 nights. So, the, the assumptions that, that have been made in the past is that the activities at West Gate in, in the, in the mall area could be impacted by as much as 40% as a result of the loss of the hockey team and the anchor tenant. Again, those were assumptions I did not have the time to evaluate and be comfortable with. So, while I, while I say there would be adjustments that would have to make, they're not adjustments that have to be made immediately because I would have to rely and, and I have to collect real data before I can make those projections. And, and I'm not comfortable with guessing what those numbers are today. As, as well as the fact that, you know, our fund balance is still dramatically below where it should be. Scenario number three, again, we like, made some adjustments in the, in the revenue, the known adjustments that, that I was comfortable with in the revenue projections for, for the five years. And the, the, again, the, the changes that would have to be made and reductions that would have to be made in order to achieve a 4.5 million dollar fund balance at the end of the year. Oh, five years, sorry.
So, what you're saying is that by year fiscal year 14, there will have had to have been $29 million cut out of the general fund budget?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and I know we're getting emails. I assume everybody is saying, well, don't cut this, don't cut that, don't cut the other thing, choose something else. And at some point, I'd like you to discuss how this all happens, that you go to the departments and they're the ones that say what they would have to cut out in order to achieve that loss of revenue, that we're not picking on any particular department, that everybody has to help make up that kind of a loss, $29 million, and they tell us how they would do it.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Martinez, go ahead and put scenario three back up, please.
Following up on that, Mayor, I, I think though that the, you know, the, we've heard that the, just about any scenario, there would be, you know, public safety would be, would be affected. And I think in this information, the information that you presented us the last time was, was it a straight 20% across all departments? Refresh my memory on that.
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, no. The scenarios were, we, we started the analysis with a, with a 25% reduction across all departments. However, recognizing the impact of, that, that would have on public safety and some of the, the loss, or loss of core services, I don't recall exactly how much the reduction was in public safety, but I, I do know it was adjusted down from the 21%.
But that was still, would have resulted in, in severe cuts in, in public safety?
It, it certainly did.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Anything you want to?
Mayor, no. Because scenario number four reflects a very similar circumstances and now, and if you take some time to absorb that and have any questions, then I would like to make some, some connections and some tie-ins to, to four scenarios that I think is, is important to be said.
Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
Mr. Skeet. Would it not be accurate to say that in all these scenarios that we've gone through now, the four today, three last time, three a time before, we're probably up to 10 different scenarios? The bottom line is simply that there is not enough revenue generated to sustain the city at its current level of operation. Would that be a fair statement?
That's correct, Councilmember Clark.
And that is the bottom line. I keep saying that's the bottom line. We simply, as a city, are not generating enough revenue to meet the current level of expenses. What do we do in our own households when we are not bringing in enough money to pay our bills? We cut back. And I do take your point that, that the bond market will look very favorably upon this city making cuts and trying to bring our expenses in line with our current revenue stream. It's perfectly logical. So, once you get past all these scenarios and once you get past the emails that say, don't cut the festivals, don't cut part, our libraries, don't cut public safety, nobody wants to cut anything. And I, I understand that. And least of all, do we here as council want to be sitting up here making those difficult decisions? You'd have to have lost your mind to want to do this sometimes. But we are charged with bringing our expenses in line with our revenue streams. And in all your scenarios and in all your attempts to educate us and the public, that is the basic message, that we must cut. And we're just talking about different degrees of cutting, different scenarios as to when those cuts are applied, different amounts of cuts, but it comes down to one essential ingredient. With the sales tax, that buys us breathing room. Would you not agree that it buys us some breathing room to, to deal with, with moderated cuts over five years rather than immediate draconian cuts in one year? Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay. Without the sales tax, then what we would have five years to do, and, and the economy changes every year. The economy hopefully will see a modest increase year over year, which may make the cuts that are in the out-years less than we anticipate right now, because nobody has a crystal ball. So, you are looking at the very worst-case scenario if all things remain constant as they are at this point, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, what the sales tax does is it buys us time, five years of time, to look at cuts and to make cuts in a more structured and logical approach than just saying, okay, the sales tax is gone, we've just got to slash and burn everything. And I think that's the point of all of these, these exercises and perhaps what, the message that's not getting through to the public is, is that we are simply not earning enough revenue to keep up with our current level of, of expenses. The sales tax buys us time to structure our cuts over a five-year period so that we're not doing some of the draconian things that would have to be done if the cuts occur immediately, all at one time. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
And, and I agree. And I think that's what these, these charts do versus us just trying to say it in words. So, when you go to the community budget meetings, will you be taking these? Because this is what people are really, they want to see the numbers. How does this work out? If you just talk numbers, it's overwhelming. So, will they be able to see the difference here with tax, without tax? It's.
Mayor, members of the council, yes.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. We're really talking, the budget discussions and the next item, so, but we're kind of doing it right now. But even on scenario three and four, there's no sales tax. And you're looking at year 14 of 29 million in cuts versus 23 with no team. So, even if there's no team, we still have a huge amount of cuts. That's really the point. So, the team has an effect, yes, of course it does.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why you got to show that.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it. So, you know, and, and also, you've made very conservative assumptions, very conservative assumptions, such as the 6 million for the arena. Well, if it's 10, that has a, that has an effect. So, and I appreciate you being conservative because I think we should be when you throw out numbers. But you can't, you don't have a crystal ball either. These are all assumptions that we're kind of making. They're based on your, you know, a lot of data that you have, but we just don't know. And, you know, we've got to look at the whole big picture. I, I, I'm so tired of going back and everybody saying, well, if we'd done this and if you'd done that. You know what, folk, that's gone. The past is past. We just need to look forward now. We really do. We need to look forward. Quit laying blame. You know, the, I wish I could take back lots of things I did in life, but you know what, I can't. So, I feel that way here. We just need to move forward, especially for the employees of this city. We need to move forward. We really do. So, I, I appreciate your work on this, and I think it was very important that we saw this and that it was out there. That was my main concern, that I really think it all needs to be out in public now. So, thank you very much, Mr. Skeet. And I thank Mr. Jameson for listening to our concerns. He didn't just walk, he went and, you know, he thought about it. And I was hoping, as a businessman, he would see the light and know that we just can't do certain things. We can only do so much. And fortunately, he obviously wants to be here bad enough that he took all that in consideration. So, I, I thank you, Mr. Skeet and Mr. Jameson, for at least getting us to this point.
Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
And following up on that, I think the public needs to know that, and it's been announced, that there are going to be several meetings that are going to be held in the community to explain, you know, the impact of Proposition 457. And in fact, the first meeting is tomorrow evening at, at 6 o'clock at the, is it the foothills?
The foothills.
At the foothills, oh, there's the, oh, there it is. I didn't know it was behind us. Well, there it is. At the foothills Aquatic Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor. Okay, all right. And then we still have the rest of the presentation.
Yes, and I just wanted to clarify because I know that Councilmember Knack indicated that after she saw these slides, she would indicate, hopefully, her position with regard to moving forward with the Coyotes. So, I just want to reiterate my position one more time and make it. So, I just want to reiterate my position one more time and make it clear that I support moving forward with the Coyotes lease management agreement.
Are we going to finish the presentation or?
Yes.
Oh, well.
Are we done?
The other stuff happens no matter what. You know, it has to do with...
No, I'm still in favor of the Coyote, of keeping the Coyotes.
Do you have your direction to go ahead and do the legal work to draw whatever you're going to draw up based on the concepts? Kay, do you want to complete, continue then with your presentation, which I got you off track of?
Mayor, again, as we leave these four scenarios, I think it's important that I make some summary comments on those four scenarios and what those scenarios really mean. And I think some of those were said. The cuts that are being proposed here were cuts, a conservative, from that perspective, aggressive cuts that have to be, would have to be made based on, you know, some very flat, static information as we move forward. I think the scenarios, the four scenarios demonstrates one thing, and I think it's important that I say this. It demonstrates that in order, if we make a decision to keep the Coyotes and move forward, sign it with an agreement with the Coyotes, the immediate effect on the operations of the city is that we are going to have to make some sacrifice to do that. I think the premise that we brought the Coyotes and built the arena on is still valid and is still important. You have heard from the mall developer over the last couple of years about the number of tenants that are sitting and waiting in the wings for signing, to making a decision on signing lease agreements with the Westgate area contingent on whether or not the Coyotes agreement is signed or not at the end of the day. Would there be other tenants that would enter the Westgate area if there was no Coyotes there? Yes. But I think the difficulty that the management has expressed to me and concerns that management has expressed to me is that what, 40 nights of guaranteed events in the Westgate area brings a different kind of client and a different caliber of business to the area that, at the end of the day, has the potential of yielding more than if there were no guarantees. Again, those are assumptions and suppositions that I could probably have spent, you know, 16 more hours and put some number to them, but they would be as valid as any other number that we would try to put, and they would have had as many holes as we have seen in numbers before. Hence, the reason why I didn't do that. I show a scenario with the team not being here and the taxes being in place and the debt being refinanced. And I pointed out some biases and some built-in, some known concerns with those scenarios. But again, for consistency purposes and for evaluating this, I put those numbers up there so that we can get a perspective of what it is. And at the end of the day, the short-term, the short-term effect of signing an agreement with the Coyotes is going to have some impact on the operations and on the ongoing operations of the city. Whether we can recover from that, and I think we can recover from that over a 20-year, over a 20-year deal. And I think that is, you know, and that is very difficult for you to put your hands around, because I think you were told the same story 10 years ago. And we are here. And I'm not asking you and I'm not presenting to you any fancy overly optimistic scenarios that is going to demonstrate when those things are going to be, when those things are going to materialize and show up in our coffers and our revenue streams. But I do believe, at the end of the day, if we were to be able to, if we can sustain the cuts necessary to make this happen, it would be in the long-term best interest. The difficult question for us to answer is whether or not those cuts are insignificant enough for us to be able to live through the reductions that it would take for that to happen in the short term. But I do think in the, over the long term and over the 20 years, this is still, that scenario with the team staying and the sales tax in place, having to wean ourselves off of that in five years will give us the best opportunity to systematically make the cuts, adjust for the changes in the economy, and reduce the amount of cuts that we'd have to make over that five years and manage it correctly. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Shurhammer to present a few slides on some of the suggestions and comments that was made from last presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This slide just summarizes for you as well as the public what was presented to you last week. We discussed with you last week 20 million dollars in reductions of the, up to 29 million dollars in reductions that would be required under one of the scenarios that Mr. Skeet just presented. In addition, we also talked to you about the five consecutive years of budget reductions that were done prior to the, prior to council increasing the sales tax rate in June of 2012. And as you can see, the five consecutive years of budget reductions yielded 25% cuts to operating budgets on average, although police and fire, which make up about 60% of the operating budget, were limited to cuts at about 10%. So, that meant the other departments really were cut more than 25%. In any case, you can see what the reductions are here. With the next slide, we wanted to summarize for you business decisions related to the reductions that were presented to you last week that we're ready to implement. The first three bullet points on this slide will be covered in some subsequent slides when we start talking about the revenue recovery operations that you had asked for some follow-up on. So, we'll cover those first three bullets in those slides. The other four bullets are not covered in specific slides today, as there were no particular questions about them. For this slide, Mr. Brian Friedman, the Executive Director of Community and Economic Development, will go through this slide for you.
Thank you, Ms. Shurhammer, Mr. Skeet, Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, staff provided a list of property assets for consideration for sale or lease, which was discussed at the September 9th and 25th workshops. Staff has identified 10 primary city assets on this slide, with each respective director working to provide options for council's consideration at a future meeting. In the meantime, we have already secured and are awaiting broker letters of valuation for the first four buildings noted on the left column. Upon receipt of valuations, staff will provide a complete analysis to council that reflects an estimated value for each of these assets. Staff is also exploring opportunities to lease, identify 100% cost recovery, or partner with other organizations to reduce expenditures and provide or maintain services. If any of these properties are sold for a lump sum, this one-time revenue may be used to reduce the secondary property tax include, increase scheduled for fiscal year 14. Reducing the secondary property tax will depend on property sales occurring before the start of the fiscal year. We look forward to returning with options for council's consideration. And Ms. Shurhammer, if you had any additional comments for that portion of it? If not?
No, unless there are questions. Okay. Question?
Are these all, I do have a question. Are these all the properties or just properties that you said we have to start at value of what we think at this amount? And if we have a property that we own that's less? Because I'm trying to think of the dry cleaner, that property there. It's downtown. It's, to me, it's similar to the IT building property. So, I would, I would say that that's something that you bulldoze it and you can start building. And I'm surprised it has been bulldozed already, because, you know, it's been sitting there. So, I don't know the reasons, but that was just a suggestion. I hear a lot of ah-hahs up here, so I'm not alone.
We're just curious.
Curious, yeah.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. That particular building, we have attempted to get some grants for that in the past and will continue. I just talked to Mr. Johnson about that, Mr. Pacino. There are some potential remediations for that structure in a Phase III cleanup. And at this time, we consider these the top 10 assets that would deliver a potential return in any one of the four categories or five we mentioned, and that we didn't want to expose the city to anything other than something we could talk about immediately with terms in the next few weeks, that we could come with these options that really present immediate revenue or sustenance for services that the council's been able to provide the public.
Okay. Thank you for the answer. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, with this next slide, we're introducing the follow-up that you had asked for us from the last meeting on revenue recovery options and those areas where we do charge revenue and whether we're at cost recovery or not. For each of these, there will be follow-up slides as we go through this, and the respective executive director or chief will come to the podium to speak. First up are the downtown festivals, and Ms. Julie Frizzoni will come to the podium for this one.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. We've gone down this road before. I'm going to attempt to walk you through this slide, and then we can, you know, determine whether this is the road we want to walk down, or at least you know the options that are available to you should we move forward. We're all very aware of the impact that Glendale's festivals have on our downtown area businesses and really the city as a whole. They bring in more than 400,000 visitors to the events themselves every year, and more than double that amount throughout the year as visitors return to our downtown long after the events conclude. Even with that mission, we still create substantial direct revenue for the city and for our festivals through vendor fees, beverage sales, kids' rides, sponsorships. That's how we pay for the majority of the festivals themselves. Those revenues average approximately $400,000 annually over the course of the last four years, five years, excuse me.
Excuse me. The only thing we're looking at is chocolate affairs. So, is the 400 just for chocolate or?
For all of them, for all of them, Mayor.
That's the cost?
That is the revenue that's generated. 400,000.
Revenue generated?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
If you give an average revenue generated over the past five years, what is the average cost over that same period?
The average cost per festival is about $100,000 per festival. And let me explain that a little bit. About 25% of that is general fund-supported. About $25,000 goes to each festival. The remainder is made up by revenue that's generated at the event. So, that 400,000 goes right back into the events to help put on the events and reduce the cost of the general fund.
But there still remains cost to the general fund when all is said and done?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
And I can, I will explain that. In light of this mission, we're all in a spot. I know that, you know, it's very difficult, but in light of this mission, the bullets before you do not contemplate a scenario that moves the events out of the downtown. We've had a lot of conversations about how to move forward with this initiative. The difficulty we have in presenting what we're presenting today with you is that we really do not have an event site. We've taken a downtown and we've turned it into an event site. So, now we are trying to create an event site out of that in terms of making a perimeter fence and all those things that need to go along with it. We've had a lot of conversations, and those conversations entailed potentially moving the festivals, which doesn't fit the mission of what anyone here entered into festivals for in the first place. So, as I go through this, I just want to make sure you know, in light of this, the bullets before you do not contemplate any scenario that moves the events out of the downtown area. Although the city's festivals play a significant role...
Ms. Frizzoni?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Lieberman?
Thank you, Mayor. Then, what is the ultimate cost to put the festivals on? If it generates 400,000 and there's five festivals, it costs 100,000, that costs us 100,000 grand, 100,000 dollars to put the festivals on. What is the bottom line? Take five festivals, blues, jazz, chocolate, litter and glow, and glitter. If it costs 400 to put them on, if they bring in 400 and it costs 100,000 apiece, deficit 100. Simply, what is the deficit for putting the festivals on? And how can we cure that deficit? And I see later we say fence them, put a fence in, charge a ticket sale, but what is our cost now?
Mayor, Councilman Lieberman, the amount that the general fund gives to the special events division to put on the events is 635,000 a year. That amount is broken up by salary, half-salary. The remaining half of it is about 320,000. Half of that amount goes to put on the downtown light display. Approximately 150,000 or so of that total goes to the downtown light display. The remaining 150 or 160,000 there is the amount that we use to produce the festivals. So, if you break that out over the course of seven or eight festivals, the cost of the festival production is about 24,000 per festival from the general fund.
Question? Mayor?
Yes.
I like Councilmember Lieberman in this case. I'm trying to get to the bottom line. You say that it costs the general fund 635,000 a year to put on these festivals. You say these festivals generate 400,000. So, in essence, the deficit to put on these festivals is 235,000 of the general fund. Is that correct?
No, no, Mayor, Councilmember Clark. We get the 640,000 from the general fund. That is all we are given. But it's important to know, let's just take one festival. I just gave you the number of 24,000. It costs approximately 100,000 to put on each festival. So, the remainder, the great proportion, percentage of each festival is put on by revenue that's generated at the event itself. So, the cost each year that is given to the marketing department is 635,000. And that pays for a portion of what the events cost. So, the remainder of that is supplemented by revenue generated at the events themselves.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I think the question we're all asking is, what is the cost to the general fund every year? And if that cost is offset, how much is it offset by in reimbursement for, I mean, if it costs, I get back to the 635,000 again, or 640. If that is what the general fund contributes to host these festivals each year, and you say that through ticket sales and sponsorships, that generates 400,000?
Correct.
Okay. Then I still get back to, where do you make up the other 235,000? Because you've already talked about ticket sales and sponsorships. So, where do you generate the additional 235,000 that you say it doesn't cost the general fund?
Mayor, any, I don't know, let me just think how to explain this. The 635,000 is flat. We get that every year regardless of how much money we generate. The money we generate then, we use sort of like a bank account. And say one year, we've generated 300,000. We can spend that year, the amount of money we were given in the general fund... We can spend that year, the amount of money we were given in the general fund, the $600,000, plus anything additional. So, it fluctuates, it may fluctuate year to year depending on the amount of revenue that we have in the bank to supplement the cost of putting on the festival.
So, the bottom line is, is that it costs the city 635,000 a year?
Yes, it does. Correct.
Which is over half a million dollars just to put on these festivals, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's true.
That's what I wanted to know.
Councilmember Lieberman.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we spend all the 400,000 in revenue in addition to the 635?
Every year, Mayor, Councilman Clark, it just depends.
I'm sorry?
We have a bank account. As you know, our general fund amount has been cut a great amount. So, we have currently $320,000. And really, if you look at that, we have $160,000 from the general fund every year for event production. So, we have that 300 or 400,000. We supplement the 160,000 and use that to actually put on the cost of the events.
Where did the 160,000 come from? You've told us three times now that the general fund has hit for 635,000. Now, specifically, do we spend the entire 400,000 additional revenue that comes in on the events?
Mayor, Councilman Lieberman, no. We have to maintain an account, a bank account, because that's how we put on the events.
325,000 in the bank we maintain?
Right now, I'm not sure what the number is right now, but we have an amount in the bank that allows us some year to maybe spend more if we need to bring in national acts for our jazz and blues or not spend that amount. It just depends how much revenue was earned the year in advance.
Mayor and Council, if I may, I think what Julie's trying to explain to you is that there's a marketing special events fund that's set aside. And in that fund, the revenues that, the donations, let's say, or sponsorships that the special events staff generates for these special events, that revenue goes into that fund. And over the years, that fund has grown some. So, that's why the general fund transfer to special events was cut in half. So, the plan that the special events staff had for the current fiscal year and for the next several fiscal years is to spend some of that fund down, to use some of the savings that they had, the savings, I'll call it, that they have in that fund to support their special events operations.
Mayor, somewhere, there has to be a bottom figure on what it costs to put the seven events on. There has to be in your bookkeeping. There must be a grand total of costs, including advertising for each event. That's what we're trying to find out. Is it 800,000, 900,000? That 325 put away, if you take in 400,000, that leaves 75,000 to spend in addition to the 635. What is the bottom figure that the events cost us?
Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, the amounts cost the city $635,000 a year. Anything above and beyond that is dependent on the revenue that we make at the events and the events fluctuate. But for the city, $635,000 is the amount that the general fund gives to marketing to put on the events.
That's not answering my question.
Might it be, let me see if I'm understanding it correctly. The cost for the events can be higher because there's some extra revenue that's been earned and you want to put on a more elaborate event than maybe you did a couple of years before. You advertise more or you can cut back and have less expensive entertainment and less promotion. And is that why there is no set amount? It depends on funding available based on what you've earned from other events?
Absolutely, Mayor. That's absolutely right.
So, the bottom line would be if you wanted to say, strip it down as far as you can, what would that be? But that's not how we have operated. We've tried to enhance our events every year.
Because, you know, as we have it right now, the amount from the general fund with everything that's in there and paying for the lights would never come close to the cost of paying for seven festivals in the downtown. So, we have to use that revenue and that revenue is what supports the festivals. So, I know that's been very convoluted. It's been very difficult, obviously, to understand.
Half of the 635 goes to salaries, benefits and so forth. And I'm wondering, I think, maybe I'm wrong, but I think some of your special events people do things other than special events. So, in a way, it may be sort of a bookkeeping type of thing because I can think of one individual who's also involved in what we'd call communications, general city communications and only does special events at a certain time in the year. But it sounds like all the salary of these people is in special events even though all of their work product is not special events.
That is correct, Mayor. You'll recall, we talked about this about six months ago, at least half time of one person's body is involved with administering the city's special event ordinance. And that's for all the events that happen everywhere in the city. So, yes, you're exactly right, Mayor.
Did you ever look at maybe redistributing the salary amounts of those who are now totally charged to special events? Recognizing that when we went through the budget last spring and we had people broken up into all these different places, that drove us nuts too. But special event season is just a certain time of the year, but the employees are there 12 months, so.
Yes, Mayor, it seemed like a fitting place. I think that's why we ended up with the special events duties. Because when an individual may come to the city to put on an event, there's one point of contact who kind of walks them through every city department. So, I guess it would have to land somewhere and it seemed like a natural fit to fit within the special events division.
Even though the folks themselves do work that's not special events?
On behalf of the entire city.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Lieberman.
Ms. Hammer, can you come up with a bottom figure of what the total cost of the events are and let us know? That's all I want. I want one figure. I understand what you're telling. I have probably worked 20 or more of those events myself, as you are more than aware. I want to know the bottom dollar line. 835,000, 935,000. I want to know the bottom line. It's a simple mathematical figure.
Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, Jerry just brought me the figure from last year based on the amount of the general fund dollars and the amount that we put in in revenue was 819,000, 457.
Okay, I guessed it at 819.
457.
But that was not totally general fund money. Some of that was...
Correct.
In that case, then you would add 600,000 to that. You would take the 819 and add the 635 from the general fund that you say was not included in that. That's 1,454,000.
Mayor, Councilman Lieberman, you would subtract the 600,000, the 635,000 from the 819. So, 635,000 of that was from the general fund. The remaining 200,000, 100 and some is revenue, sponsorships, revenue generated at the event. So, 819 is the total number.
Mayor, oh, that just kind of is almost the same as the 187,507 dollars and marketing costs, right here on our slide. We've been going around this circle. Would that be that number there?
No, Mayor, that's not.
It's 184,000. It's 184,000.
Well, she said this.
But we're in the ballpark.
So, if you would like me to at least kind of talk through this a little bit?
You know what, we would, and Councilmember Martinez has something, but I think some of us would like you to do that in about 10 minutes.
Sure.
Get into it.
Take a break.
Sure. No problem.
And you can get all your numbers together and, do you want to ask your question before we go? Go ahead, Councilmember Martinez.
I apologize, I was out for a few minutes and you might have covered this. The events that, you know, they generate sales tax dollars, they generate the, you know, monies for the businesses. Do you, did I miss that perhaps at the beginning? How much, do you know how much money is generated by businesses downtown by the events?
Mayor, Councilman Martinez, we did an economic impact study in 2010 and the International Events and Festival Association, the international organization that oversees events and festivals, came here during Glitters and Chocolate Affair to do that for us. And their estimate of just those two events was that there was an economic impact of $3 million to the downtown in both direct and indirect benefits, revenue, lodging, hotels generated from just two of the city's signature festivals, Glendale Glitters and the Chocolate Affair.
So, if you add those other festivals, I mean, that figure was up.
It could be at least double or more than that. It was only done during those two and I think those two show, and those are two of our larger ones, but I think those two show the impact beyond perhaps what we're just looking at here in terms of the city budget.
And then we get, well, we're getting 2.2, now 2.7, sales tax that comes back to the city.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I would like, just like to make up, make one follow-up comment. When we talk about Westgate, we don't look at the impact of the Forty Nights at the Arena on Westgate for purposes of our discussion, did we, Mr. Skeet?
No, we did not.
No, we did not. If we retain these festivals and we retain the $635,000 a year to maintain these festivals, that means we have to cut 635,000 from someplace else in the budget. Would that be?
That's correct.
A fair assessment. So, it's a matter of priority. Now, if we've got to cut another 635,000, knowing that public safety makes up a substantial part of the general fund budget, some of those further cuts would have to come out of public safety in my way of thinking. So, we are looking at retaining the festivals in favor of cutting other departments' budgets to make up that $635,000. And I am not willing to go there.
I totally disagree. You've heard everybody on this day say, the reason to keep the Coyotes is because it's going to bring more business to Westgate, which is going to generate more revenue for the city and we're going to have more businesses open up. So, to take away what we established, the first tourism destination in the city of Glendale was our downtown because it needed it. Westgate is new, it has vitality, it has a freeway. Our downtown does not. Take away that tourism destination, first of all, you're taking away however many hundreds of thousands or millions of visitors a year that will come to our city and have a positive impression of it. You will bring back what I saw when I went into office and that was buildings that were boarded up, had graffiti on them, had bars on the window and nobody wanted to come down here. You will add expenses in the police department because of the crime that will go on because there's nobody down there. So, I think that's an extraordinarily wrong way of looking at it. And we are figuring in, if it's not in a piece of paper, the revenue's not on a piece of paper, I hear it in every single one of your comments as to why we should give $11 million and then 13 and 15 and however much to Greg Jamison versus 635,000 to our own special events department. It's something I think you wanted to say.
Mayor?
Mayor? Councilmember Clark?
I would just like to respond that the point that I was making, for purposes of discussion with regard to Westgate and the Coyotes, Mr. Skeet deliberately did not include any indirect benefit in terms of the sales tax that was generated out at Westgate as a result of having the Forty Nights of Hockey. Now, I think if we're going to talk about a level playing field, as we discuss these issues, that it is extraneous to bring up the amount of sales tax revenue that is generated by the four festivals. If that's the case, if we're going to take that into consideration for the downtown and the festivals, then we need to take that into consideration when we talk about the benefit of the arena and the Coyotes. We have to establish a level playing field and we are not doing that.
And I believe you are. And I have a suggestion as to where to get the 635,000, reduce Mr. Jamison's fee by $635,000 a year because it's better spent right here downtown in our own downtown that we have, last time I saw, and it's been years and years since we compiled all the figures, we have invested close to $100 million in trying to take the heart of our city, where our city was founded, and build it back up from a place that was discarded, thrown aside, that nobody wanted to come to and that includes this building, this complex, everything you see down here, close to $100 million. And we're going to throw all that away and go back to a dark city for 635,000? Take it out of Greg Jamison's fee, that's how I feel about it.
I'll second that.
This one, let's go, Mayor, going back to Councilman Clark's comment is that the, those cuts to public safety, those severe cuts would be under the worst-case scenario. So, you know, the proposition, depending on Proposition 457. So, you know, yeah, there's going to be some cuts, but they're going to be severe cuts as I think we said earlier.
Councilmember Lieberman, you're standing between us and a break.
Yes, I liked it. I want the downtown events, as I said, I've worked better than 20 of them. I take the downtown festivals, the very next slide, 25 bucks is too much. It just won't sell. How much for kids? How much for juniors? How much for seniors? We have to come up with the workable. Am I in favor of fencing the whole thing? Yes, we're going to have to because there's no other way that we, that I can understand where we can charge a ticket fee price. But I don't want them dropped. You may not remember, but a week ago, I was the one, top line on page seven of the budget book we got. First item was festivals and I was the one that says, take them off of there. We're not going to do away with them. I totally agree with the Mayor. It's worth 600,000 plus, no, it's worth 817, 819,000 plus to put those downtown on. Our downtown merchants count on them. On one hand, Tito is saying that the Coyotes bring people to Westgate, but it's only 50% occupied, so it's not doing what I would consider enough to keep me in business. The downtown brings thousands, I get six festivals, not seven. What's his seventh?
Some of that depends, Councilman Lieberman, on how many December weekends we do. But it starts with glitter.
Yes.
We're doing three holiday weekends.
Chocolate festival.
Glow, Chocolate Affair and Jazz and Blues.
Okay.
And then we're also doing summer band now out of special events. So, it's really trying to program the downtown all year long.
We need a figure that we can live on for the cost of fencing. We need a figure that we, we need, one of the other things we need is better parking or advertised parking at the college and other places where we bring them in on the buses. I need a figure on how much that costs, how much it would cost to fence, and then some figure that will bring us enough income to, if not do away with all of this 625 or 35 or whatever, it doesn't matter, we'll cut it in half with revenue brought in by fair payers who pay a ticket price to come to our events. If you put it too high, you are destroying the value of it because you won't bring people in. You put $25 a ticket and a guy comes from Mesa with his wife and teenage child... You put $25 a ticket and a guy comes from Mesa with his wife and teenage child and that's $75. That's prohibitive.
I think what they're thinking, and I really want to call a break, I think they're thinking that not everything will be behind the fence, that some of the festival will be outside the fence. So in other words, isn't that the plan, that there would be vendors and booths and like right now, food is in the street, that there would be stuff outside the fence, but if you want to experience entertainment up close and personal, you go inside. Am I right or wrong?
There are several options, Mayor, which is, will account for the differences in the prices there.
Can you, can you, can we do that in about 10 minutes and we'll just take a short recess, please? Thank you. Thank you for your patience.